Good morning and welcome to the December 15th meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your Father, who has established the creation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Pine?
Here.
Supervisor Horsley?
Here.
Supervisor Slocum?
Here.
Supervisor Tissier?
Here.
Madam President, groom.
President, thank you. We're going to begin with public comment, and these are for items that are not on the consent calendar or are on the consent calendar, not on the regular agenda. Happy to have Mayor Rick Colacheck here today from the City of Half Moon Bay.
Good morning. Good morning, Supervisors. Just want to acknowledge a few things this morning. First of all, can you hear me okay?
No, please begin.
Okay, thank you. I just want to thank the Board of Supervisors for our collaboration. All of the best things that have been happening on the coast side have come through collaboration, whether it's protecting our shoreline, whether it's considering our new library that will serve the entire coast side, both the city and county, and other projects, all comes through great collaboration. And we're just super appreciative of the positive relationship with Don and with the whole Board of Supervisors. And I just wanted to acknowledge that publicly. I know you're considering an item on consent today for funding toward the coast side library. With our budget of about $14 million, we've dedicated $6 million so far toward that project. And I know today you're considering matching that. And I think that's fantastic. It's going to serve our youth. I always characterize our library as, you know, we think of Half Moon Bay as this charming little hamlet, but we're a charming little hamlet wedged between San Francisco and Silicon Valley. Our children are growing up and competing against children in communities with very advanced technology and resources, and we need to be competitive with that. And this is a great step in that direction. So just want to acknowledge that. I want to thank you for your collaboration, and I look forward to more good working time together. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming, and believe it's our pleasure to work with you on a number of projects, especially the new library. Now we will go to Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Groom, members of the board. My fellow veteran supervisor Slocum and Mr. Malpe and County Council, Mr. Byers, thank you for your service to the county. May you have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Please usher in a Happy New Year for the family members of persons living with serious mental illness who lack the capacity to seek treatment voluntarily by voting to authorize the recommended $33.7 million contract with Telecare, which is item number 38 on the consent agenda, and to expeditiously resolve the lawsuit brought by the survivors of the impaired young woman who died in Half Moon Bay in 2014 in Yonera-Sorano, which is item number A4 on the closed session agenda. Replacement of the Cordillares Mental Health Center is a tribute to your foresight and leadership and a rebuke to those who silently allowed a community asset to deteriorate and said nothing when Sequoia Hospital closed its 22-bed mental health treatment ward. Resolving the Yonera-Sorano lawsuit by vigorously implementing Lower's Law could also be a tribute to your foresight and leadership during the coming year, as well as a rebuke to those who misrepresented the facts and misstated the law in order to perpetuate the intellectually and morally bankrupt policies and procedures which place those living with serious mental illness who lack the capacity to seek treatment voluntarily at risk of homelessness, serious injury, or death. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Therefore, I urge you to approve the proposed $33.7 million contract with Telecare, which could be considered an ounce of prevention even with that price tag, and expeditiously resolve the lawsuit by the survivors of Yonera-Sorano, even if it is an expensive pound of cure. Thank you for your service to the county.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Michael Stogner.
Good morning, Supervisors, and also I wish everyone a Merry Christmas. I'm here to speak about an event that took place last month in San Mateo County, and it took place just across the, in the next building, actually. And it was a civil service appeal hearing for San Mateo County Sheriff Deputy Juan Lopez, who was appealing a ruling that came down. And the unique part about it, the part that made it historical for San Mateo County, is that Juan Lopez requested that it be made public, and he requested that it be able to be recorded and videoed. And the commissioners had stated that they don't think that's ever happened in San Mateo County history, because normally that's pretty private information. What I can tell you about that is that the event was supposed to last about four hours. It lasted nine hours, and I say that it lasted that because of San Mateo County Council, David Silberman, loading up the commissioners with a tremendous amount of data that had nothing to do with what the hearing was about. As it turns out, undersheriff Carlos Bolanos was one of the witnesses, which is rare that we have a undersheriff under oath. And he stated that the investigation, which was done by Sergeant Jason E. Pirdan, determined that Sheriff Deputy Juan Lopez was dishonest. And I want to say to the public that I don't believe that investigation showed that at all. I believe that's Carlos Bolanos's opinion. The other thing was, the subject matter of a Brady officer came up several times, and that's a person that cannot be trusted. So their word, you can't use them in court, they're just not an honest person. And after this nine-hour hearing, I went out and just did a little research, and I found out that the person responsible for the investigation, there is no question that Jason E. Pirdan is a dishonest person. And I don't even understand how he's an employee of the Sheriff's Department at this moment. So thank you very much. And I just wanted to say that Sheriff Deputy Juan Lopez is in court tomorrow. He faces up to 30 years in prison. He's being charged with 12 felony counts, and I just wish him the very best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stogner.
President Groom, if I may respond briefly.
Please, Mr. Byers.
Deputy Davis, or I should say Chief Deputy David Silberman did an extraordinary job in that case, and I received a lot of feedback to that effect. In fact, I watched the hearing for about an hour and was quite impressed by the job that he did. And the bottom line is that the department did prevail in that hearing in a unanimous decision. So I wanted to set that straight for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Byers. Now it is time to approve the consent calendar and set the agenda, and we are going to remove item number 61 from the consent calendar.
With that, I will make a motion to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda items, pulling item number six. Are you removing it or just pulling it?
We're removing it and going to discuss it.
Okay, very good.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the agenda is set and the consent calendar has been approved, with the exception of item number 61. And Supervisor Horsley, did you want to make some comments?
On item number 61?
Yes.
Yeah, essentially, I understand Jim Porter has some information about it as well, but essentially, I think this is something that is a long time coming. I think we should proceed with it. I'm in favor of the agenda item.
All righty, I have two public speaker items. Or, Mr. Porter, do you want to make some comments?
Yes, please. President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Malpe and Mr. Byers. This item is before you, which involves a parking permit program at the San Carlos and the Half Moon Bay airports. This came about because we'd been receiving complaints from some of our businesses at the San Carlos Airport, primarily on the west side of the airfield regarding limitations in parking. We wanted to come up with a parking permit process that was equitable for our businesses on the airport, both in Half Moon Bay and San Carlos, and met the needs of the vast majority of those operators on our airport. In terms of process, we looked at the types of businesses on the airfield and developed a draft program. This program was sent out to the businesses on December 7th. Those were sent out to our tenants and businesses on the airport. On December 10th, we were invited to attend a business association meeting of the San Carlos Airport businesses and presented the draft parking program at that meeting. We did not receive much feedback at the meeting on the 10th. However, after that meeting, we started to hear from some of our tenants. So based on the feedback that we received, we've modified the program accordingly, and you have received a copy of the modifications of that program. And for those in the public that would like to see that, we've placed copies on the back table in the back. But in essence, what we've done is we've changed the number of permits available for airport lesses and concessionaires from five permits to 10 permits. We've also added a new category for airport permies, permittees, excuse me, which are really charter services to allow them to have 10 permits. And then we're also providing a new category, which is flexible permits, which provides flexibility to businesses that need additional permits. They can receive up to two additional permits. We have taken a look at what other airports in California are doing, other general aviation airports in California are doing. We contacted Oxnard Airport, Camarillo, Hayward. They told us they have a 72-hour limit on overnight parking at those airports. I'd like to point out that our policy allows for overnight parking of up to seven days with a permit. Santa Barbara is an airport that does have a permit program. They allow 14 permits per business. I'd like to also point out that we have a limited number of parking spaces at San Carlos. We have roughly 400 parking spaces on the airfield. Our original proposal allocated roughly 30% of those spaces to long-term parking. Under the new proposal, the allocation goes up to 40% on the airport. And one of the nuances of San Carlos is it is primarily a general aviation airport. Most of our tenants and businesses are daytime users. So we wanted to strike a balance between those that use the airport during the daytime and need parking for that purpose versus those primarily charter services that have a need for parking overnight, and in some cases, long-term, up to seven days, for their customers. And that concludes my report. I do have the airport manager here if we have any technical questions, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I appreciate the modifications. I thought that the numbers of, I think it was four to five, was actually probably a little bit too much. And I think that when we first talked about it, I always thought it was about 10. So I do appreciate the modifications. And again, I just believe this is a long time coming. I think we need to move forward with it.
All right. If there are other comments, I'll call the two public speakers.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Harrington, and I'm General Counsel at Surf Airlines. The proposed resolution that we have been provided with states on its face that the impacts to the businesses, customers, and the public have not yet been addressed. So adoption of such a resolution is therefore premature. Surf Air did not receive any direct notice of the proposed resolution despite the county's awareness of Surf Air's concerns about the parking situation at San Carlos. Procedures to obtain ample parking permits to ensure smooth operation of all the businesses in a fair and equitable manner is unclear at this time. Surf Air asked the county to please postpone a decision on this important issue until a formal and thorough review process has taken place and ample notices have been provided to all relevant parties. We're happy to provide any information and to assist in any way for the county to go forward with a thorough vetting process of the parking issues at San Carlos Airport and to ensure fairness and legal compliance for everyone involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington. Elaine Jooms.
Good morning. I'm Elaine Jooms. I am a professional pilot, have been for most of my life, ATP-rated corporate pilot as well as with the regional carrier. My domicile was San Jose, so I'm familiar with the playground of the airports. I am currently working in an airport affairs capacity with Surf Air. Surf Air has enjoyed a good, ongoing relationship with the county, and we have always enjoyed their high-level professionalism. We have, however, been caught off guard by the sudden introduction of a severely restrictive parking proposal for long term. If implemented, it will greatly impact our business in a negative way. Besides the lack of proper notification, we want more time for a proper study to be conducted, including feedback from the affected businesses and tenants. In the county's own documents, the proposal and the resolution, the county freely admits that they currently lack tools to address impacts from long-term parking, in so much stating, "Tools are needed to more effectively address impacts from long-term parking and ensure it does not result in a lack of access to parking." I personally don't know of any immediate area airports with such a restrictive long-term parking in place. For example, Hayward, as was stated, has a 72-hour parking, overnight parking in place, much like San Carlos currently does. Palo Alto offers monthly parking at the fee of $64.50. Santa Clara County airports offer the same monthly parking for $66.50. With that in mind, we respectfully ask for postponement of this parking proposal until a more thorough and collaborative assessment can be conducted involving the airport businesses and tenants. And we're happy to help, so please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jooms. There are no other public speakers. What's your pleasure, Supervisor Horsley?
Well, I'd like to listen to my colleagues, but I, again, I will make the motion to adopt the parking regulations with the modifications. And we could always adjust them if there are significant problems in the future, but for now, I think it's, this is something that's timely. I think it needs to be done, and I'm prepared to make the motion to approve.
Okay. Second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number 61 passes. We will now go to presentations of the awardees from yesterday's wonderful Women in Management Holiday Salute and Celebration. And we have award winners here today to be acknowledged. And shall we begin with Rebecca Ash? Supervisor Horsley? No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Supervisor Tissier?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I am delighted to be able to present this resolution to Rebecca Ash as the liaison for the Children's Fund. Over the years, we haven't had a full-time individual helping us there at the Children's Fund, and Rebecca was hired in November of 2013 as a program coordinator to meet the needs of San Mateo County children and their families, mainly foster and low-income youth being served by our county programs. She quickly displayed great leadership. She created a strategic plan for us that tracked all the goals and deliverables. It was accountable for fiscal tracking and spending measures, holiday and goods distribution, and marketing and fundraising. Her strong administrative skills as a self-starter really made a huge difference in increasing the public and social media and community recognition of the Children's Fund. She also created data systems to be able to track and report out all of those that have been served. She continued to research and submit grant applications, and in two years, she raised over $300,000 in monetary and in-kind contributions and served over 10,500 children. She has accomplished so much in such a short period of time. We are absolutely delighted to have her. We want her to continue because the children in our community really do benefit from the great work that she's done, and she's really an exemplary example of being a resourceful and motivated employee. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve this resolution for Rebecca Ash and ask Rebecca to come forward, and I'd love to present it to her.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's been a really wonderful experience working with the Children's Fund and being a part of the county and being able to do something for the low-income and foster kids here. I grew up in San Mateo County, and so I really love being a part of the county government right now. So thank you, and everyone here, please get involved with the Children's Fund, because we need extra help so we can serve more kids.
Now we will honor Denise Spiller, Supervisor Horsley.
Well, it's my honor to present this resolution honoring Denise Spillers for, it's the Development Champion Award winner. So I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Denise Spillers actually started working for the Sheriff's Department in 1989. And Warren, I was not the sheriff at the time, so I did not hire her. But Denise comes from, you know, an outstanding family, and she is just one of many people in her family. She's just an outstanding county employee, an outstanding human being. She started off as a corrections officer for the Sheriff's Department and then left after a period of time. I guess she was left after about 14 years. I thought you had been a deputy sheriff, but were you always a corrections officer? But we wanted you to be a deputy sheriff. We were really, you were one of our stars. In any case, she left to, because of, she had two children, a boy and a girl. One boy's name is Maurice Spillers. He's actually named after his dad, who actually is a deputy sheriff of the Sheriff's Department. And in any case, she left to become a writer, and she was very successful for about four years. And being a writer is tough, but she was able to make a living for herself and her children. And then she came back to the Sheriff's Department, and I know, I was the sheriff then, and I wanted her to go to become a deputy sheriff, but she decided not to do that. She became a legal office specialist and fairly recently is now the legal office specialist manager. And I can tell you that, you know, the paperwork that goes through jails is voluminous, it's difficult, it's complex, and working with all of the people coming to jail essentially talk to the legal office specialists first. And to be able to de-escalate, to, you know, help people through that system, to understand it in a way that, you know, kind of calms them down, is a remarkable talent. She, again, like her family, her mother, I saw her mother yesterday, Marguerite Howard, is just, is such a solid, wonderful family, and you are part of that tradition. So it's my honor to present you with this resolution.
I'd just say a very quick thank you to the board and to the Sheriff's Office for all the opportunities and the growth over the years. I'm really proud to be a member of the Sheriff's Office, so thank you, guys.
Now we will honor Karina Shorthal Enriquez. Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. It's an honor to present this resolution to you this morning, Karina. And as the President said, there was a really fantastic Women in Government celebration yesterday. I counted the people in the room, and I think there were around 160 or so people, which had to be a record. The other really wonderful thing about that event was the number of toys and books, clothes that people brought to give to needy children. It was a special event. And at that event, Karina got up in front of those 160 people and told her story, which was very moving. So before I go on, let me make a motion to approve this resolution honoring Karina.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Karina works as a caseworker with Service Connect, and she works closely, I understand, with the probation, correctional health, the Sheriff's Office, Human Services Agency in giving many layers of support, education, and advocacy to improve local reentry and public safety by promoting personal recovery and rehabilitation in the people that she One of the most interesting things on the resolution is that she talks about, or it talks about the fact that she holds her clients accountable for the promises that they make and the results that they seek, which I think is pretty amazing. The other thing that she's done that I was impressed with was she began a wall of hope. That's a wall of hope, which displays photographs and brief statements from her clients and staff on a community room wall. And she started an art group which contributed to an exhibit in the Hall of Justice for Recovery Happens Month, wherein she volunteered to invite, coordinate, collect, and transport all of the art contributions for that show. She truly does amazing work for those folks trying to get their lives back on track. And Karina, congratulations on winning the, on receiving the 2015 Women in County Government Public Service Award for the extra mile. So if you'd join me, I will give you this certificate.
I just wanted to say thank you to the board members for this. I really appreciate it. Five years ago, I would never imagine myself standing here today, so I'm honored to be a part of San Mateo County. It's truly a blessing being able to do what I'm most passionate about. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, for the 25th anniversary of Women in Government, the committee has declared a special award honoring Adrienne Tissier for her distinguished service on this board for the last 11 years. And she's embarrassed now, but, so I would like to make a motion that we approve this resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Many of you know the work that Adrienne has done in the field of transportation and criminal justice. She served for nine years, 10 years on the daily city. City council was mayor for two years. Prior to that, she was a planning commissioner and a park and rec commissioner for the county. But all through that, she has always remembered her roots and remembered that as government, we serve people, and we serve people in all states of their life. And she's always paying attention to how we can make, we can elevate life for the residents of this county. And so Adrienne, congratulations.
Thank you. You want a photo? No photo, okay. All right. I just want to say thank you to the Women in County Government for their tremendous job yesterday with the luncheon, and congratulate all the other awardees and to my colleagues. We've had a great run. We've got, you have another year with me. You're stuck with me for one more year, so we'll make the most of that. But thank you very much for this honor. Appreciate it.
I would just like to acknowledge the Women in Government Board of Directors because they worked so hard throughout the entire year and especially putting on the wonderful celebration that we had yesterday. So President FISA Steele, the Vice President Gina Louise, the Secretary Janeth Lujan, Assistant Secretary Lillian Lillys, Treasurer Ellen Eckler, the Assistant Treasurer Rong Kion, the Program Officer Angela Sajuthi, Assistant Program Officer Anna Mercado, the Marketing Officer Lynell Duran, Assistant Marketing Officer Marcia Winters, the Media Officer Christine Hollander, the Membership Officer Lay Thompson, and the past President Judah Tomlosov. So thank you to all of you for a great, great job. And now we will go, we're going to do one other item before we switch to our study session and ask District Attorney Wagstaff to do item number seven, which is a director's report. and ask District Attorney Wagstaff to do item number seven, which is a Director's Report.
Good morning, Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. Good morning. And special congratulations from our office to Supervisor Tessier. When you said that she's been a partner with us in criminal justice, it sort of understates it quite a bit. We have been ecstatic, and somehow or another, we're not going to let her get away, you know? Between the sheriff and I, we have a lot of people with means to keep her with us. So it's -- we will certainly work to do that. But congratulations. Thank you for letting me take a few minutes to talk to you. Six months ago, when I addressed you, I told you that one of the programs that we were starting up, that we were going to experiment with, was a new program called a Deferred Entry of Judgment Program. And our goal here was, as we were at the beginning of this year and looking, okay, what is something we can do to improve criminal justice? And we looked, and this was one of the ones we thought about. And it was to deal with, as is going to be described for you, the -- what we were looking for is for certain misdemeanors where people don't have to be labeled. They don't have to have the conviction that sticks. And you've heard a lot about programs that are being done, very noteworthy programs by our Private Defender Program and others, to have records expunged. They don't fully expunge that. It doesn't -- it means that they can tell people they haven't been convicted, but it does not take it off their record. It remains a conviction in the State Department of Justice and is utilized only, not by private business, but it is available for use by governmental agencies, such as schools and federal government awarding contracts, et cetera. We decided that for certain types of misdemeanors, perhaps there is another alternative. And that is still staying within the role of the prosecutor. And our role, as was certainly drilled into me well by my predecessor Keith Sorenson and Jim Fox, is that our job is to hold people accountable. Judges do the sentencing. That's a different branch of government. Ours is to hold them accountable. We were looking for a way here where we can still hold people accountable for what they do, however, not saddle them with these cases that, in our county, we continue to prosecute quality-of-life crimes. It's what distinguishes our county from some of the counties perhaps around us that have far greater violent crime and must devote their resources to that. But we didn't want to have that stay with people. And I do want to emphasize, this is not an alternative to incarceration. Because the people who face these generally, they're not being incarcerated. So it isn't that. Instead, it's simply to help the people. And that's -- we started this program. It was to see if it would work. And I'm going to ask my Assistant District Attorney Al Cerato, who is the third-in-command in my office, to address you and describe briefly the program for you. And I will simply conclude by saying that in my assessment, and it took some convincing. Al was the leader in convincing me, the old-time prosecutor, why this would work for the community based on our search and study of other offices around the state that have implemented variations on it. We worked with the Private Defender Program. And finally, we worked with who we had to have on our team, and that was the other branch of government, the judiciary. And Judge Grant was excellent in working with us so that we've implemented the program now. So what I'd like to do is turn it over to Mr. Cerato now, and he can briefly describe for you just what we're doing. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. When it comes to the field of criminal justice, there's no such thing as a one-size-fits-all approach. While we try to treat similarly situated defendants the same, we recognize that no two cases and no two defendants are in fact alike. Some cases involve substantial violence where our traditional approach of incarceration is the appropriate and worthy response. And some defendants display through their repeat offenses that they are not willing to live within the rules of a civilized society. But what about those individuals who succumb to temptation and cross over to criminal behavior, otherwise law-abiding citizens? What of that college student who exercises poor judgment, perhaps with regard to alcohol or petty theft, and results in something that could impact them negatively as they seek licensing or employment on graduation? What of that middle-aged person who's impulse to have something they can't otherwise afford gets the better of them? Or who commits an act of vandalism when involved in a long-term neighbor dispute? What of the frightened driver who flees the scene in a moment of panic in a hit-and-run setting? We wanted to do something to address those people because the traditional tools of our system of justice, incarceration and fines and building a criminal record, can in these settings actually do harm. And so we looked around the state to see what was happening. And one of the developments is this Deferred Entry of Judgment Program. It's a flexible response to these low-end types of crime. And many counties throughout the state are beginning to adopt them. We made use of a vendor who assists us in doing that, so there's no cost to the county. The fees that would normally go to the court, probably actually less than what normally would be charged by the court, go to the vendor, which will provide services. And the goal of the program is to provide restitution and closure to the victim and bring accountability to the perpetrator without causing that perpetrator to suffer a criminal conviction. We're using specific educational services. They're a leader in this field. They have over 20 years of experience. They're used by multiple other counties in California and elsewhere. And they develop their expertise in educational rehabilitation services. That was their focus 20 years ago when they started, developing curricula to help people to gain insight and awareness into their behavior and to help create and foster change. So we were very happy with what they had to provide us and the program that they were able to set up with our assistance. Here are the program requirements. It begins with the entry of a plea of guilty or no contest. We're dealing here with people who don't want to fight the charges, who recognize that what they did was wrong and want to move forward with their lives in a positive fashion. They have to complete a six-hour educational class that's tailored to the offense. So there are things for petty theft, for alcohol awareness, for dealing with life skills and those types of things. These classes make use of evidence-based programs and practices that assist defendants in gaining awareness and the ability to learn, practice, and replace negative thinking patterns with positive, pro-social ones. The classes are interactive, requiring participation of the offender, and they focus on dispelling common excuses about lack of a real victim in some of these crimes, the petty nature of the crime, or other lies that people commonly tell themselves to avoid taking responsibility for their behavior. Strategies to help form new habits are key. The instructors here are highly skilled and vetted, many possessing advanced degrees in areas such as social work or family counseling. And while it may seem like common sense to most of us, surprisingly, these classes often provide a perspective that's not previously been considered by these offenders. We hear that repeatedly when we talk to them afterwards. In addition, the wrongdoer will be required to make full restitution to the victim for the damage that was done. And in addition, the wrongdoer will be required to do a period of public service, typically 20 hours, a way for that person to realize and remember that there are consequences to criminal behavior. But rather than filling a jail cell, they're able to give back a little bit to their community as they do this. The benefit to them is clear. The plea that they enter is then withdrawn. So they go back in time to before they entered that no contest plea. The case is dismissed in its entirety, and that's what's transmitted to the Department of Justice that keeps track of these records. So it shows up as no conviction, no entry of a plea, and their record in that regard remains clear. Now, the program is not suited for everyone, and as a result, there are limitations to its application. We're going to exclude crimes of violence, obviously, whether actual or threatened. That's going to involve things like hate crimes as well, any kind of stalking behavior, anything that presents a threat of harm to an individual. Weapons violations are excluded. Animal cruelty, driving under the influence, or other things that would present a danger to public safety are also going to be excluded. The vast majority of the participants in the program are in these low-end offenses. Things like disturbing the peace, various forms of theft under $200, a number of trespass violations, acts of vandalism, if it doesn't exceed $1,500 and doesn't involve gang behavior. So graffiti and that kind of thing would be excluded. People who are involved in alcohol-type offenses other than driving. So drunk in public, especially, as I mentioned, about college students, minors in possession of alcohol. And then a couple of traffic-type violations, hit-and-run most notably, driving on a suspended license, and failing to follow directions the police would give in a traffic setting. Those are going to be subject to this Deferred Entry of Judgment Program. To date, we've been very happy with the results. We've had 147 people enroll as of last week, and of those, 86 have successfully completed. Total that have gone through at this point is 96, leaving about 50 that are still in process. And we continue to get more and more every week. 10 have failed to complete. And the thing to note there is, these are people that are dropping out on their own. They're not going to the classes, or they're not finishing the public service work. We've been very flexible with these individuals to give them more time and to accommodate their needs if they present that. So the failure rate is actually something that is brought on mainly by the participants themselves. So at this point, we're seeing a success rate in the high 80s, about 87%, which we're very happy with. These programs continue to be studied, obviously, but there's no question in our mind that they have a place in any vibrant and responsive system of justice, and we're very pleased to offer them in San Mateo County. I'd like to take any questions or comments.
Just have one quick comment. This is a terrific program. I mean, we've always talked about, you know, people being accountable, but there are a lot of people, especially our young folks sometimes, that get into trouble. And really, you don't want to ruin their lives. You want to make sure they can get back on their feet. Sometimes they think it's hilarious what they're doing, but at the end of the day, when they find out what the consequences are, they stop laughing. And this gives it an opportunity, at least to get back on their feet and realize, you know, I'm getting a little older, I shouldn't be so stupid, you know? And sometimes -- and that's what happens. You grow up. College students, we all had fun in college, but you know what? It comes to a point where you're back to work and you have to grow up a little bit. So I really appreciate it because it really will help these -- well, anyone in particular, but I think some of our youth that get caught up in things early on. So thank you for your hard work on this. This has been great. It's terrific.
First, I echo Supervisor Tessier's point that this is a great direction that we're going in. Really, really pleased to see you doing it. I had a couple of questions on the qualifying offenses. You mentioned here in the last bullet point, you know, hit-and-run and driving on a suspended license. There were two others. Can you repeat those again?
Sure. Those are 2,800 of the vehicle code, and that's failing to follow the direction that an officer provides. So in a traffic setting, if you don't pull over and they're forced to follow you for a distance, you don't comply with their requirements. So what we did was we drew a distinction. There are more aggravated forms of that. 2,800.2 involves actually reckless driving while being pursued by a police officer. That would not be subject to the program. And the other one was tampering with an automobile, 10852. So we see that many times when people are walking around looking to see if there's something they can steal from inside a car. If the car's locked and they break in, that's auto burglary. If they just open a door to get maybe small change, that's tampering.
Okay. So on these two -- With theft under 200, so, you know, Prop 47, right, didn't they up that number? I forget what it is.
Well, it's $950 is the line between petty theft and grand theft today.
So if this program's successful, would it, you know, would we potentially look at elevating that number in the future?
Yes. What we decided in-house was to give it about six months and start to examine the results to see where people are being excluded. The reason we picked that number is that many times you see theft that occurs where someone goes into a store and is stealing $800 worth of items, maybe a stack of jeans or of razor blades. It's pre-planned. It's part of maybe a crew coming from somewhere else into our county. And we didn't want to offer that to them, obviously. So what we're looking at is the impulse offender. We do exercise a little bit of flexibility. If a defense attorney presents to us some rationale why it's 250, but it really should be treated as something less, our prosecutors have discretion to make that decision. But we want this for an impulse-type offender, not someone who's targeting our stores and our communities.
Okay. And then the other one that I wanted to ask you about, I was a little surprised to see hit-and-run on there, you know, because in common, my common reaction is that's a pretty serious thing.
Right. So hit-and-run causing injury would be excluded because that obviously is going to aggravate the level of culpability. But many times what we see, especially among young drivers, is it's a moment of panic. They need to stop, they don't. Sometimes they try to correct it. Maybe they'll come back hours later or contact someone hours later. That's still a violation. Many times the courts will civilly compromise those with that same thought in mind, that it's something that's between a traffic violation and a misdemeanor. But here, again, this allows us to bring accountability. They're going to learn life skills in that class about responsibility and facing the consequences of what they're doing. But they're also going to pay restitution if they caused that accident.
Okay. Yeah, obviously, there's different gradations of hit-and-run, so.
Right.
And then finally, you know, you mentioned 147 enrollees so far. So how big is this universe? Well, I guess you have to decide as part of the prosecution, right?
Right.
I mean, and I guess you can get a sense that is, you know, are there, you know, is that kind of, is that, I mean, this is great. This is a great, this is a great program for the 150. But, you know, is that number going to expand or stay the same?
It's one of the things that we're studying. When we started out, we didn't set a target number. And when I talk to my counterparts in other counties, many counties adopted this for resource issues. They just didn't have enough deputies to handle their volume. That wasn't our concern. What we're trying to do is present a flexible response for those kind of offenders. And so what we wanted to do was create the program and see what would happen. If the numbers were very low, we would obviously look at it. And by contrast, if they were too high, we might have to look at it. Right now, we haven't done that study yet because we're just at the six-month point and about to embark on that. But the feeling was, let's do this the right way, and then we'll see how it develops.
Right. So the District Attorney's Office has to offer the wrongdoer this option. They don't elect. I guess the private defender could raise it. So it's all figured out during the whole, that initial process.
At the time that we reviewed the initial report, we made that determination. So our prosecutors have the training to determine, is this offender within our program? And at that point, they fill out a sheet that allows any deputy in court to realize this is one of those cases. A defense attorney can make that request, but typically, we've already screened it for that.
Okay. Again, I'm very pleased to see us going this direction.
Just a quick comment is that, first of all, I commend the DA and your department for taking this on. And just from my experience, it's sometimes giving somebody a second chance instead of going through the criminal justice system. You sometimes, and oftentimes, get a better result. So commend you for really thinking of something that's really creative.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Slocum?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Wagstaff, for the program. Just one quick question. Do you have any, and I don't know if it's legal, but geographic information on where the program participants are coming from and where the 10 that, I guess, didn't go through the program come from? Do you have that information? And is that something that could be shared?
Well, I could look up those 10 and find out what their listed addresses were. It's not something that we're tracking. The only thing we're doing geographically is we're offering the classes in both the north and the south half of the county for convenience purposes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you, and happy holidays. Thank you.
We're going to do one more quick item, which is item number 10. So we get people on their way here. Thank you, Mr. Monowitz.
Good morning, President Groome, Members of the Board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. Item 10 before you is a recommendation by the Planning Commission to adopt a general plan amendment and zoning change to designate a site for its intended purpose, which is timber harvesting. And I am pleased to introduce to you Staff Planner Rob Bartoli, who processes this application and will present the item.
Good morning, Members of the Board of Supervisors. Today before you, you have a general plan amendment and zoning map amendment to redesignate four parcels from open space preserve to timber harvest, timber production, and rezone the same parcels from Resource Management District to timber land preserve zone. For a brief presentation outline, I'll go over the project location, the project proposal, regulatory compliance, and staff's recommendation on the application. The four parcels are outlined in green on this map. And the proposal was to rezone and amend the general plan land use for these four parcels located in the North Skyline area, slightly west of the town of Woodside, located on Skyline Boulevard. The four properties are currently zoned Resource Management. The four parcels have been historically harvested with a harvest permit exemption in 1990. And there was also permit history, excuse me, timber harvesting history from the properties from the 1800s to the early 1900s. from the eighteen-hundreds to the early nineteen-hundreds. Regarding the proposal before you, the applicant has stated that the reason they have applied for the designation and the rezone is to better align the proposed uses on the property, and regarding the timber harvesting that is occurring on there and is proposed, the applicant has stated that the harvesting of the property will be selective and will be for the purpose of forest management on these four properties. Highlighted here in yellow, again, you can see the four parcels. There is existing timberland production and timberland preserve zones adjacent to the property, one of which the applicant owns currently. They also own a parcel that is split Resource Management and Timber Harvest Zone production. Regarding regulatory compliance, the timber harvest plan has been submitted to Cal Fire. It's attached to the staff report if there's any questions regarding that. There are two land use policies that we looked at, the general plan policy, nine-point-four, and policy nine-point-three-two, both regarding uses in the rural lands and the timber harvest lands. The proposed rezone and redesignation of this parcel is compliant with those two policies. Regarding the zoning regulation districts, timberland harvest, timberland preservation zone, the allowed use, again, there are no development at this time, it's just timberland harvesting. It isn't allowed use in that district. There is a thousand-foot buffer that would be eliminated from the rezone from RM to TPZ. That, which, the thousand-foot buffer is regarding the distance from harvesting from single-family structures. There are approximately five structures that would be within that thousand-foot buffer. Again, that would be eliminated with the rezone to TPZ. However, no comments were received from any members of the adjacent properties. We noticed for both the Planning Commission and for this meeting as well, within five-hundred feet, and no comments were received. And also regarding compliance with SEQA, the timber harvest plan essentially functions as an environmental impact report, so from a county perspective for the rezone, there is a statutory exemption, so the project is exempt from SEQA for the rezone and general plan amendment. At the October twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, Planning Commission meeting at San Mateo County, the Planning Commission recommended unanimous support for the project. At that meeting, Lani Roberts, on behalf of the Committees for Green Foothills, spoke in favor of the project, as she believes the intent of the applicant is to improve the forest through selective harvesting on the property. Regarding the findings for the project, the general plan land use map amendment is compatible with the adjacent land uses and will not be in conflict with the policies of general plan, and the proposed rezoning of the subject parcels meets the public necessity, convenience, and general welfare of the community. Per the applicant, this will also, this project will allow better management of the forest lands on the property. And I can go into depth on the further findings if you would like. But our recommendation to the Board of Supervisors is to adopt the resolution to amend the San Mateo County General Plan Land Use Map to change the land use of the four parcels in question to timberland, to timber production in the unincorporated North Skyline area, and to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter Two of Division Six of the San Mateo County Ordinance Zoning Annex to revise the zoning maps, Annex A, to change the zoning to the four parcels to TPZ, timberland harvest production in the unincorporated area of North Skyline. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here.
We have a speaker card from Martin Eberhard. Would you like to speak, sir?
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Martin Eberhard. My wife and I purchased this land a few years ago primarily to prevent its development and to preserve and hopefully improve the health of the forest. One of the first actions upon purchasing this property was to hire a professional forester to help us assess the condition of the land and to provide a forest management plan to guide us in repairing the damage to the property done by the previous owners. Over the last few years, we have begun to learn what it takes to maintain a healthy forest, including the management of its timber resources. This rezoning proposal before you will bring the zoning of the land into line with its actual use and into the best, in the best interest of the county. I appreciate your consideration of this matter and encourage you to support the rezoning. Thank you. I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Eberhard. Any questions? Any further comments?
Just one comment. When Mr. Eberhard was talking about the former owners, it was used for, I think, motorcycles or off-road vehicles, and so a lot of the trails are pretty much torn up, and so he has promised or committed to actually restoring those. And all those, when those trails are chewed up, they do cause a lot of sedimentation and creeks. The other thing about the thinning of the forest is that he will be taking down a lot of the duff that is the potential fuel for a forest fire, so I think it's really good stewardship and good management of the land.
So would you like to make a motion?
I guess to close the public hearing.
You can close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye. And I will make a motion to approve, to adopt the recommendation of the resolution amending the general plan land use, and also, I guess I can also, at the same time, make a motion for the ordinance amending Chapter Two of Division Six of the San Mateo County Ordinance Code.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, that carries. Now we will go to item number five. Ms. Jensen? Item number five is a study session on a potential livable wage for county contractors, and you can see we have assembled quite a team here.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Peggy Jensen. I'm Deputy County Manager. Earlier this year, Supervisor Groom requested that staff prepare a study, a research paper on living wage ordinances. We convened this team to do that work. Our team includes two members of the Office of County Counsel, Chief Deputy John Nivlin and Deputy Counsel, County Counsel Amy Armsby. We also had two staff from the Office of Budget and Performance in the County Manager's Office, Mary Claire Katz and Heather Ledesma. The team looked at both the legal requirements related to living wage ordinances and also reviewed six living wage ordinances that have been adopted by counties in California. Of those ordinances, we looked at the components that were included in the ordinance and also the terms that had been adopted by these counties. We're here this morning to present that information to your board. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to John Nivlin.
Thank you, Peggy. President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. I thought we'd start with just a quick statement of what it is that local agencies are typically trying to accomplish when they adopt a living wage ordinance, and you can see the purpose is generally to ensure that employers who enter into contracts with the local government agency in question are paying wages to the employees who are working on these contracts at a level that supports employees at an appropriate level. As you'll see, as we move further into the presentation, the level of a living wage is typically, well, it's based on different metrics depending on the local agency, you know, key to things like local circumstances and economic impacts, et cetera, and there'll be more to follow on that. So what is a living wage ordinance? Basically, what we're doing here is using the local agencies, the counties, to use our case, contracting power. Its power is a market participant to require certain government agency contractors to pay a wage at a level above what would otherwise be required under state law. You can see, again, state law, as of January of two thousand and sixteen, sets a ten-dollar minimum wage. Typically, again, a living wage ordinance would set a wage for affected employers above that level. It may also require that employers who contract with the local agency at whatever level is ultimately determined, provide certain benefits, as you can see, again, healthcare, sick leave, other things like that. And it's probably appropriate at this point to talk about what we aren't presenting on today. We're not talking about a local minimum wage. A minimum wage is a situation where a local agency uses its police power to require all employers within a jurisdictional area, in our case, it would be the unincorporated county, to pay, again, a wage above that which is otherwise required by state law. That's not something we're talking about today. We'd obviously be prepared to come back and discuss at a length if that were the direction of the board, but that's not the point of the presentation today. This isn't new ground, as you can see, a lot of counties in the state, or some number of counties in the state anyway, have moved down this road, and certainly a number of cities as well have done the same thing. Los Angeles County as early as nineteen-ninety-nine, and Santa Clara County most recently in two thousand and fifteen. At this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to my colleague Amy Armsby, who will talk us through some of the nuts and bolts.
So I want to talk a little about what the typical living wage ordinance would be comprised of. There are essentially five components that we think about when we're looking at a living wage ordinance. The first one, primarily definitional, it identifies which contractors are going to be required to comply with the living wage ordinance. It's often, most frequently done, by the value of the contract. The second component identifies which of the employees working for those contractors are going to be covered and which might be subject to an exemption by category. And we'll get into some detail about what some, examples of some of those exemptions could be. The third component actually sets the living wage, and it sets up any kind of credits that are going to be provided. Essentially, it's incentivizing contractors to provide either health benefits or retirement plans or both. The fourth component provides for how a living wage over time would be adjusted to track inflation. And the fifth component is, and it's some kind of an enforcement mechanism, and as we'll talk about in a minute, that typically falls into two categories. Ordnances can be self-enforcing, or they can include an enforcement component that's more active monitoring. Turning to the first component, the contractor criteria that are most frequently used in a living wage ordinance are, as I said, a dollar value of the contract, so contracts above a certain amount in it for a given year, contracts valued at, in excess of a certain number for a given year. It can, this section can address issues relating to the length and/or term of the contract. The number of employees could be a trigger. A certain, a contractor of a certain size, small size presumably, would be, could be exempted. It could get into the type of service provided. It could, there could be some specific waivers or exemptions that are provided for in the living wage ordinance, for example, an exemption for nonprofits or other government agencies. Most, if not all, of the living wage ordinances contain a provision specifically allowing for board discretion, for the board to make a waiver, to grant a waiver under particular conditions. That power could also be delegated to, for example, the County Manager's Office. The second component, some, when we talk about who's covered and who's exempt, which employees are going to be impacted or covered by a living wage ordinance, many of the ordinances define who covered employees are and then set forth certain exemptions. Covered employees might be defined as all full-time, part-time, temporary employees. Certain ordinances that are out there have actually imposed the living wage requirements, both on the contractors themselves and on any subcontractors, subcontractors, rather, that they use to deliver the service to the county. The exemptions, again, this is very definitional. Categories of employees can be exempted. One possible example, employees who work fewer than four to five hours a week on the contract, students under twenty-one, you see interns or anyone earning academic credit. Volunteers could be exempted. There are a number of different areas in which we see exemptions for categories of employees. For the next slide, we're going to have Mary Claire Katz take you through how much is the living wage.
So as you can, as you can see on this slide, we have created a table comparing living wage ordinances, wages and benefits across six other California counties. The wages and benefits vary from county to county with a range of eleven dollars and eighty-four cents to nineteen dollars and six cents for wages without benefits, and a range of nine dollars and sixty-four cents to fifteen dollars and thirty-nine cents for wages with benefits. The benefits provided also vary from county to county. Santa Clara, which Amy mentioned is the most recently implemented ordinance, has included health coverage, paid leave, and retirement incentives, with two dollars per hour paid by the employers for health insurance, and two dollars per hour paid into the retirement plan, bringing the total down to fifteen dollars and six cents, in comparison with a nineteen dollars and six cent wage without any benefits. Others have left the benefits provision optional or have required paid leave days. San Francisco is the exception, being both a city and a county. They have what is referred to as a minimum compensation ordinance, but it functions the same as other living wage ordinances in that it applies to employers who contract with the city and county of San Francisco. You'll see that they have differentiated between nonprofit and for-profit employers. This minimum compensation ordinance is different than their minimum wage ordinance, which applies to all employers that have employees who perform work in San Francisco, and it's a different amount as well.
So the fourth component that I had mentioned is how, what mechanism is there within the ordinance that will adjust it on an annual, typically an annual basis? And that can be done in a variety of ways. It generally involves some type of annual review and an adjustment that could be tied to economic indicators, the local CPI, federal poverty level, other data, primarily looking at the economy locally. Here I wanted to note also, a living wage ordinance could phase in a living wage over time, so that the wage increased incrementally until it reached its initial number, after which it would adjust annually. There's an option in most living wage ordinances by which the board could defer an annual increase, even if it's occurring somewhat automatically, if the board in its discretion decides that there are certain conditions present that warrant that kind of, you know, deferral, could be an economic downturn or other, other conditions, local conditions. The fifth component is the enforcement provision, and the enforcement provision, or the way in which living wage ordinances are typically enforced, fall into generally two categories, as I said earlier. They can be self-enforcing, and they can be done through active monitoring. Self-enforcing essentially means that the ordinance provides for a cause of action for employees who believe that they've not been paid in compliance with a living wage ordinance. Those attorney, oh, sorry, those employees can then bring a cause of action against their employer that's been established under the living wage ordinance. They do that through the court system. There's, in, I believe, all of the, or most or all of the living wage ordinances that we've looked at, self-enforcing provisions, self-enforcing ordinances also include an attorney's fees provision, and that is, of course, to incentivize an attorney to take on a case for an employee who feels they've not been paid in conformance with the living wage ordinance. The active monitoring category, if you will, the active monitoring mechanism would mean that the living wage ordinance establishes some kind of infrastructure by which the agency imposing the living wage ordinance, in this case, the county, would then take on the process of actively monitoring compliance and hearing grievances, conducting investigations, following up, imposing penalties, et cetera. So these are just two different types of approaches to the living wage ordinance enforcement. Now, for either of these categories, if you will, either of these types of enforcement mechanisms, we would want in the ordinance, or we would typically expect to see in the ordinance, some type of annual employee notification that's required by employers covered under the living wage ordinance, so that those employers, those contractors, are obligated to inform their employees that they are to be paid in compliance with the living wage ordinance. that they are to be paid in compliance with the living wage ordinance. There is also certain contract monitoring provisions that are found in many of these living wage ordinances. They can come into play in the selection process, during which a prospective contractor might be asked to certify that if awarded the contract, they would agree to pay employees in conformance with the living wage ordinance. There, we would expect to see a provision in the contracts themselves for contractors who would be subject to a living wage ordinance that would mandate that they comply with the all-applicable provisions of the living wage ordinance. And therefore, if there was a violation, the county itself might have a breach-of-contract claim against the contractor. And then there could be some kind of additional certification process that we would expect to receive from contractors on perhaps an annual basis, even for multi-year contracts, where they would then certify again that they are in compliance with the living wage ordinance requirements.
Thank you, Amy. So as your board can see, living wage ordinances have many components, and there are many options that need to be considered for each component. I'd like to turn now to, excuse me, I'd like to turn now to what our estimate is of the potential cost of an ordinance. But first, I'd like to point out that without knowing the specific terms of an ordinance, and then without taking those specific terms to our contractors and conducting a survey, it's impossible for us to know the actual cost. But what staff wanted to do is to give your board a sense of what costs might be. We convened a group that included our purchasing director at the time, Scott Johnson, and also the directors of finance for our health system, Gina Wilson, and the human services agency, Robert Mankia. And asked them, the first question we asked them was, which contractors do you believe would be affected by a living wage ordinance? And they all responded by feeling that it would probably be our community-based organizations. So Robert and Gina tallied up the total dollar amount that we are going to be spending in fiscal years 16, 17, on community-based organization contracts. And that's just under $70 million. To give your board a rough estimate of what the cost of a living wage ordinance might be, and as we've explained, dollar amounts can be set at a variety of levels, have been set at a variety of levels by different counties adjacent to San Mateo, and in the Bay Area, and throughout the state. We ran a couple of percentages of that $70 million. Half a percent would be just under $350,000 at the low end. And if we, if our costs were about 2% of those CBO contracts amount, it would be closer to $1.4 million. A couple of points that Gina and Robert made when we were discussing this is that there's potential impact on ACA eligibility related to livable wage. And there is also possible compaction issues in terms of not just affecting the individual whose wage might be increased, but how that wage might affect the wage of their supervisor, and those above them within the organization. So in addition to looking at livable wage for our contractors, when we met with Supervisor Grum, she requested that we'd also look at what would be the impact on county employees who were paid at the lower end of our wage scale in the county. So Heather Ledesma, in our Office of Budget and Performance, worked with the Human Resources Department to gather information on who those employees were, what they were paid, and then ran some numbers on what the cost might be to increase their wages. What we found was that our about 180 staff in the county are paid less than $16 an hour. Those staff include interns, such as summer jobs for youth interns, and also other interns, and also essentially people who are students in training, possibly master's students who are gaining work experience that's required for their professional credentials. In addition to interns, also our park aides and our library aides are paid less than $16 an hour. Primarily, these folks are seasonal employees, and generally, part-time. In terms of wages, about 30% of that group of 180 is paid $10 an hour. As of today, that's a dollar more than minimum wage. As of the first of the year, that will be exactly minimum wage. What we found was that the majority of these 180 staff are paid $12 to $15 an hour. So in terms of estimating what an increase in their wages would be, the lower end, it would cost us about $500,000 to increase the wages of the lowest-paid staff in the county, and at the higher end, about $1 million. In looking at this issue, one of the important points we discussed with county council was that the recommendation would be, if the board chooses to make a change in wages for our lowest-paid employees, that that be done through a salary ordinance change, that that not be done through a living wage ordinance. So those are two separate activities, and we would be happy to come back to your board, depending on what direction you would like to give us related to the salary ordinance. That concludes our presentation. Our panel is available to answer any questions that your board may have, and to follow up on any direction you choose to provide us.
Thank you very much for that very thorough study. Do you have questions?
I do.
Supervisor Tissier.
I'm just sort of curious, when you talk about, take the community-based organization contracts at 68 million. Are these contracts that have already been let, so are we being retro, if we were to do a living wage, would it be retroactive?
Well, actually, I think Ms. Armby spoke to this to some extent. I think we have, again, the ability to transition it in, to the extent we chose to, with respect to new contracts, for example, or so. And of course, the board would have the discretion as well, if it chose to, to implement it immediately. But I think a lot, what a lot of jurisdictions have done, based on our study, is transition the ordinance in, so that you can address the fact that you, prospectively, you're just addressing new contracts.
And I guess what sort of strikes me is if, obviously, I think it would be hard to be retroactive, because they've put in what their contract would be based on their costs already, not adding additional. But I guess the other thing that concerns me a little bit is if, and I assume that's what's going to happen, is as soon as we do an increase, those that are going to bid at the county are going to increase their bid based on, so at the end of the day, it's a county cost for all these contracts, really. Not the contractor's cost, really.
Yes. The 68 million, $68.9 million are contracts that have currently been approved for the next fiscal year.
Right. I guess what I'm saying is, the increases that are going to be absorbed, is the county's going to absorb them, because the contractor's going to increase their cost of their contracts.
Yes, that's right.
So it's not that the contractor's paying more, you know, he'll have the same profit.
Right.
Supervisor Orsman. Estimated increase, like 0.5% is over $300,000. What would that wage look like? What's that number? Is that 14, 15, 16? What's the number?
That's the lower end.
What is the lower end at?
14.
And then, so 1% is?
Well, actually, we didn't, we didn't base this, because we don't know how many employees will actually be affected. We gave those percentages, because they're not based on a minimum wage rate. They're just a gross estimate of what it might cost.
So we didn't say, for example, plug in, say $16 an hour, $17, so we just made an estimate?
That's right.
And the other one, it says identify which employees working for a covered contractor. We're not, we're not saying that, if five, if you have 10 employees, and five are doing stuff for the county, and five are doing things for, not for the county, we're not, you're not excluding them.
That's what we would have to decide through the ordinance process. At this point, without knowing what the terms would be, it's impossible for us to know what the actual costs are going to be, and who would be included or not included in the ordinance in terms of the employees for the subcontractors.
And then the compaction issue, that would escalate the cost to some extent? We don't really know what that would be, though.
We don't know at this point. There's, depending upon the terms, or what, how much the ordinance would pay people, who would be included, we would then recommend going out to do a survey of our contractors to find out what those actual costs would be.
I was just going to add, there are some ordinances that specifically designate that only employees providing service to the agency are required to be paid in conformance with the living wage ordinance. So that concept is out there. It's very complex, as you've probably noticed.
I think the problem would be that if, if you have 10 employees, and five are making $17 an hour, and five are working $10 an hour, you create a lot of problems internally for that organization. So I, I think we would have to do it for the whole organization. I suggest we might have to look for the whole organization.
Just to, just to follow up, when you started out, you talked about why a living wage that said that supports such employees above a poverty level. So if you're looking at wages at $10, is that poverty level? Is $12? Is $16? I mean, how do you determine what that poverty level is?
That's a really good question. When I, when we set up the presentation, we weren't pegging that to any particular metric, per se. We weren't, for example, trying to incorporate the federal poverty level. Every jurisdiction ultimately is making a determination on the basis of their local circumstances, as to what it takes, you know, to sustain a household at an appropriate level for that, for that area. So it really, again, I think it comes back to what Peggy was saying earlier about the setting up, perhaps, of a smaller group to look at some of these things, and what would be the appropriate place to peg, the appropriate level at which to peg the salary.
And I can see, if you look at, you know, who we've looked at, whether it's Los Angeles, although that's a pretty big area. But, you know, our county is a very high-living wage area. But, you know, it's really, I think, in essence, going to make a difference in what we would need to do if we're going to look at the living wage versus, you know, some other counties.
I have one more question. Just one of the things I think, I think we have to be aware of, or wary about, is that sometimes, and I'm, I just, there are benefits that people get at certain levels. And so they would end up losing those. So the, so one of the things that, we don't want to be in a position where the rate, the wages raised to such an extent that looks good, but at the same time, the person is no better off.
That's absolutely right. And I know that Amy had spoken to the, building into, many ordinances anyway, waivers that might be appropriate to sort of ask for in certain cases, for cases like that, where, you know, we have unintended consequences that might flow from, you know, crossing a particular threshold.
Well, first off, I'm really pleased we're taking a look at this. You know, income inequality is such a, such a big problem, and it's a powerful tool for us to potentially deploy. Of course, there's probably 100 decisions that have to be made when you look at this, when you look at all the variables. But let me just start with a couple, I only have a couple of questions for now. You know, if I recall, Santa Clara, at least at this point, I was surprised to read, actually, doesn't include their nonprofits. Am I correct in that? That seems very odd, because that seems like the major group that we, we're focused here. Do you have any color on that?
That is correct. That is correct, that Santa Clara exempts nonprofits. Santa Clara also, we generally have learned that they did not do a lot of research on what the economic impact was going to be. And they are continuing to gather data on that. And we're continuing to have communications with Santa Clara about their data, because I think, you know, they are, as a, as a neighbor, it's important information for us to have.
I was just going to say that I think that they, they're starting off with excluding nonprofits, but I think they might phase in other organizations. But I believe, I mean, that's definitely where they've started.
Yeah, because when I think of our CBOs, you know, I typically think of nonprofits. So, anyway. And then I had a question, I had a legal question about other government agencies that, you know, that do business with us. Do we have, do we even, do we have the legal power to tell them what to pay? Or is there some kind of government, you know, government, whatever, exemption?
Comity, comity principles.
Can we tell, you know, Sacramento, that if you're working with us, you got to pay X amount of dollars?
Sure.
Well, certainly, as a matter of, as a matter of contract law, I suppose, again, we have the ability to, this is not being done on our police power, it's being done under our contract power. So I think that the short answer is, we can impose terms on contracts we care to.
They would have to agree.
Yeah, but, yeah, yes. And to your point, however, a lot of, of these ordinances that actually speak to the matter exempt out other government agencies, just as a matter of, just as a matter of a fact.
Presumably, on the theory that it's...
You don't want to tell, comity principles, you don't want to tell, not comity, but comity. You want to, you don't want to tell another government agency, you know, what they have to pay their folk.
You'll be years in discussion, or whatever. But that's interesting, so a number of them do carve that out.
Yes, that's right.
And then the third, third question, and again, could ask lots, again, there's so many variables, but just a couple of things that jumped out. On this issue of compaction, wouldn't that really just, wouldn't that be more of an issue for us? You know, our, our county wages in that if a, one of our contractors faced a compaction issue, I mean, that's kind of their own, I mean, I wouldn't see off the top of my head why we'd have to worry about that in particular. I mean, we're bringing up the lower-wage workers, which would bump them into some other workers that are fortunately getting paid enough. And if they want to raise that, that's fine, but I don't see where we would be involved.
I think that gets back to Supervisor Tissier's question about how does it affect the community-based organization overall? And what would they be then bidding back to us in terms of their total costs for doing the work?
Okay, so I guess the theory would be that they would raise their, their lowest-cost workers, but then their middle cost might go up, and then our overall quote might go up. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick question or two. Could you just describe the process that Santa Clara County used? They're at 1906, I believe. Pardon?
They get, they let them use credits to bring it down.
Yeah. Could you just describe their process? Did they hold public hearings? Did they reach out? Did they?
My, my understanding, and it's somewhat limited, is that they did hold some public hearings. But the general impression that I've gotten, and Mary Claire may have additional information on this, is that there were a number of factors taken into consideration in coming up with the $19, the $19 rate. But that, certain, there was a certain scratching of the head in terms of where that number precisely came from. I don't know if you have any additional?
I don't. On where, how exactly they came to the, to the $19 and $15 options, I can find out.
Well, I do know from looking at the record that it wasn't, it was not a unanimous vote for some of the reasons that are being articulated here, is that some doubt or question about ultimately what the impact would be financially. So, but it was, you know, certainly processed, not unlike the process we'd have here. But it doesn't sound like they were able to drill down to the level that made every member of the board comfortable.
Yeah, I would just add that the vote was 3-1-1. Three folks, three supervisors were in favor of it. One abstained, because they didn't have any data on costs. And one voted no, because they didn't have any data on costs. Mary Claire has developed a very good working relationship with their staff, and they've asked us to provide them with any research we come up with, a methodology for calculating these costs.
Okay, thank you. Just one other thing, just for my own education. Could you just help me understand, does this apply to CBOs in just the unincorporated area that do business with the county? Or is it any CBO in the county that does business with San Mateo County?
Actually, maybe even broader than that, any CBO, period, that does business with the county, even if they're located outside the jurisdictional boundaries of the county.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else?
I was just wondering, maybe for the future, if it's possible to put a scenario together for us? You know, take, you don't have to put the name of the CBO, but be able to put in, you know, what the contract is, you know, if we raised it to $16, $14, what does that do for the overall contract? And what's the likelihood of what that contract may be when it comes back to us? You know, not these, in this year, the 16, 17, but 17, 18. I mean, it'd be just good to see what some of this might play, how it might play out. I mean, by looking at all this, it's sort of hard to say exactly how this is going to play out. We obviously know we have, we're in a high-wage county, and we need to do something. But I'd also like to see what it does to those contractors, and how it comes back and hits us.
We would be happy to do that.
Maybe same with our employee groups, that we talked about, the 180 employees. I just think it's easier when you see sort of a scenario to get a sense of, you know, which direction we might likely go.
Right. We can put together a matrix that includes different types of contractors, and how this would affect them at different levels for you.
And we don't need the names. I mean, I don't want to influence that type of thing, but it'd be helpful to have an idea.
When we did the, when we did the 3% addition to our CBOs, do we know what they used that for? Was it for salaries, or was it just for operational costs? Or was it a combination? Did we have any indication of that?
My understanding, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I think it's both. I'm hearing from...
Raina.
Okay.
Both, it was used for both.
Do we, do we request specific data from them, on how it's being used? Or we just give them the money? We haven't, we don't have that now, but we could.
It'd be interesting also to look at, to see what difference it made in the employee salaries at that time.
My understanding is the increase was 5% over the past two years for the CBS. My understanding is the increase was 5% over the past two years for the CBS.
Can I just make a comment? I think if we get more into details into this, you know, it'll be interesting to see, you know, how many of our employees that work for our CBOs, you know, are paid these low wages. Like, for example, one area I know is concerned to all is childcare workers, you know, unfortunately in society, they typically are paid very, very low, in many cases, I assume, lower than what we might, might discuss.
Probably true.
Any other, any other comments or questions? We have a number of speakers. Would you like to switch to those? Okay, William White is first.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and address the board today. Very happy to be speaking on this very important issue. My name is William White, and I represent United Way of the Bay Area. We are a regional nonprofit organization that works throughout the Bay Area, including here in San Mateo County, to connect our working families here in the Bay Area with the resources and the supports that they need to achieve economic success. Now, we do this by promoting policies and programs, policies like a living wage policy, that are going to give all of our Bay Area residents a chance at achieving that success. Now, we firmly believe that policies like this one, like a living wage ordinance, and lifting up the wages of your workers, is one of the most powerful tools that local governments have at their disposal to helping working families make ends meet and achieve their basic needs. This is especially important in this increasingly expensive region. We all know how expensive it is to live in the Bay Area, especially here in the county of San Mateo. At the United Way, we've adopted the Insight Center's self-sufficiency standard for measuring what it costs to make your, your ends meet on, in a particular community. So for San Mateo County, for a family of four, that's two adults, two kids, families need to be earning about $89,000 a year, and that's just to cover their basic needs, you know, food, housing, healthcare, and so forth. So, you know, this obviously demonstrates the importance of working to lift up wages for low-income workers. So, you know, this is a huge opportunity for the board to take on this issue and to really lift up workers. You've seen from the county staff report that communities all across the state and including here in our region have taken on this issue. So we really hope that the county of San Mateo will stand with those other communities and pursue a living wage ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Shelley Kistler?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I wish we had more than two minutes, because the Labor Council has been doing research on this issue for over a year. We have lots and lots of statistical data, some of which, most of which, we've already submitted, but plenty more to come. We appreciate that you're taking up the living wage. We think it's really important, and since many jurisdictions have, in our county and around our county, we can learn from other experiences and adopt the best practices that these other counties have taken up. While researching various examples in the state, your staff has several different options that they've come up with and models, but it's important to realize that as we look around, we need apples-to-apples comparisons. We are not Santa Cruz, we are not Marin, we are not Ventura. We, as you know, are one of the highest cost of living counties in the nation. And it's so expensive here. I was just listening today on the radio on the way that a two-bedroom house here in Redwood City is now, a two-bedroom apartment is now going to be going for $3,800 a month, pushing out anyone making a minimum wage they cannot possibly afford to live here. And that's why the employees are clogging our roadways as they commute long distances to do their jobs. We urge you to consider that exemptions, waivers, offsets, and thresholds only serve to make the effort more complicated than it needs to be, really. It, there are many ways you can do this. Every other layer that you consider in the waivers and offsets and all of that, the thresholds, makes this a very complicated procedure. It does not need to be that complicated. And even the well-publicized fight for 15 doesn't begin to solve the problem for $15 an hour, because a single person with no children, single person, no children, in our county cannot be self-sufficient, cannot. We know from all the studies and the representative from United Way cited, the Insight has said in our county, it has to be at least $18 an hour. Two more quick points.
Go ahead.
We must, and you must, do better than, you have an opportunity to lead by positive example, to get people out of poverty as soon as possible. It's high-ground moral work, and we stand to be partners with you and our nonprofit as well, because you're the right people to get it done. You've been around a long time, you know the county very well. We want to work with you to help make this happen. And so we hope that you will consider us partners in doing this work. We have a lot of research that we've already done, and we really want to help get this done, and we thank you very much for the opportunity to both speak to you today and assist you in getting this accomplished. Thank you so much, and Happy New Year.
Melissa Platt.
No Happy Holidays?
No. No.
Good morning, President Groom, Supervisors. Thank you very much for this opportunity. As one of the not-for-profit contractors in San Mateo County, we very much appreciate your tackling this challenge. We know how difficult it really is to take a look at this and to come to reasonable conclusions that we can all afford and that we all support. I do want to put a personal face on this. Mental Health Association of San Mateo County hires staff that are tasked with working with some of the most vulnerable members of our community. They help them get off the streets, they help them get into housing, they keep them in housing, they keep them out of the hospital and out of jails. Those are all tremendous savings for our community. Unfortunately, many of the members of our staff can no longer afford to live in San Mateo County. We try very hard to pay them a living wage, but it is challenging and it is difficult, and we face this. What it means is that increasingly, our staff come from outside of San Mateo County, which adds one to two to three hours per day to their job. We aren't getting the best of them when their children are two hours away and there's a crisis at school, or when they have a dentist appointment and it takes four hours, rather than the two we used to think of it as being. Our clients deserve the best, and at this point, we're having difficulty recruiting new employees, qualified employees, and the kind of employees you expect us to have. So on behalf of the not-for-profit organizations, I appreciate your tackling this, and we look forward to some resolution. And if you do have questions about not-for-profits, feel free to call on me.
I'd like to ask you a question.
Sure.
Do you have, can you tell us roughly the average hourly wage of your employees?
Probably the average hourly wage of our employees is close to $14 an hour.
Okay. Thank you. Bradley Cleveland.
Hi, my name is Bradley Cleveland. I'm with the Union Community Alliance, and I work with the Raise the Wage Coalition, some of whose members are here, going to be addressing you today. I have a couple of answers to some of the questions you had. Santa Clara County, they have carved out the nonprofits for now, because they did not bring the nonprofits in on the discussion early on. And I think that we have been working, talking with some of the nonprofits, and we hope as you move forward with this, that you bring the nonprofits into the discussion, and it seems that that's your intention. The Santa Clara, they said the $19 in Santa Clara County was based on, the city of San Jose has a $19 wage, and I think against, I think that's based on the self-sufficiency calculator that Will mentioned, the Insight Calculator. We look forward to working with you and encourage you to lead by example. There's a simple premise behind the living wage, and that local governments should not be financing poverty-level jobs with taxpayer dollars. So the county spends, as we know, hundreds of millions of dollars on services that you buy from the private sector, goods and services, and this, this money that you spend should really be lifting families out of poverty. There is a high cost to low wages. Employees that don't pay a fair wage, they end up depending on the public assistance that the county provides. And if employees don't get affordable health insurance on the job, they depend on the county safety net. You already do set a standard for some of your contractors. I know you have a local preference, among other things. So again, this is improving, setting standards for the contractors that you use. We submitted a letter that enumerates some issues, priorities that we hope you look at. I just wanted to mention specifically earlier discussion about misdemeanors. We hope that you actually band the box, have fair chance hiring. It is a policy that you, as a board, have for your own employees. It's the kind of standard you could put in contracts. Two last points is, we do support the, making sure you're not only setting example with this policy, but help the nonprofits actually meet that standard. And finally, there is the issue of enforcement, and we hope that you look at a way to enforce this, look at possibly a county office. Thank you.
Thank you. Raina Lehman.
Good morning, Supervisors, staff. Happy Holidays, and thanks for opening the discussion on this important issue. There was a little focus on the cost to the county. My focus is going to be on the human cost, as the Community Services Director with the Labor Council here in San Mateo. Where, San Mateo County is a prosperous place. According to 2012 records, we had over a $5 billion economy here, and that has probably only grown over the last three years. Our unemployment rate is about 3%, the lowest in the state, and yet, the poverty rate, according to the California Budget and Policy Center, the poverty rate in San Mateo County has gone up 4% over the last three years. Some of that is the fact that good-paying jobs and enough hours are not available. And in our county, we have over 14,000 folks who are full-time workers, 4% of our workforce, who are below the federal poverty level, very low level of income, certainly not enough to live in the county. Single moms fear the worst in our county. And it's not that people aren't working. The number of unemployed parents, for example, has decreased, but the share of housing cost burden has significantly increased for all of us. We have a highly educated workforce. Most folks in the county are high school graduates, most of those are bachelors or above. So we're, and 20% of our educated workforce is living below the poverty level. So we need to pay attention to this. The minimum wage is too low. We were talking about $15 an hour, that comes out to $2,600 a month. The state is going to raise the minimum wage to $10 an hour, which comes out to $1,733 a month before taxes. So these are, these are wages that, when we hear what self-sufficiency, we hear $89,000 to working parents, $89,000. We're throwing around numbers that just aren't enough. Thank you. I look forward to your leadership, and thank you for allowing all of us to work with you on this.
Thank you, Ms. Lehman. Barbara Erbacher.
Barbara Erbacher, I am a retired nurse and a 10-year volunteer with the Health Plan of San Mateo. The effects of housing and food insecurity on children is well-established, including brain and cognitive development, school readiness in preschool years, learning and academic performance during school years, physical, mental, and social development and health throughout childhood. Many lack stable housing, have inadequate heating or cooling, have caregivers who struggle with depression and/or physical health. Research shows that mental, the mental stress of being poor is a major reason that low-income people are more likely to have high blood pressure, cholesterol, become obese and/or diabetic, since long-term stress creates hormones that compromise the immune system and promote weight gain. One stark indicator of these health disparities is that in San Mateo County, the average age of death varies by 19 years between our most and least healthy cities. 62 years in East Palo Alto, 81 years in Atherton. Most low-wage workers are in their 20s and 30s, and over a third of these workers have children. Children bear the brunt of poverty. A $19 an hour wage will lift working families out of poverty. It's an investment in the future that will pay dividends over a child's lifetime. A living wage of at least $19 will help families make ends meet. Fewer families will be forced from their homes and neighborhoods. More families will be able to afford medical care, healthy food, and education toward future retirement or employment. A higher wage makes it less necessary for people to work long hours and multiple jobs, giving them more time to be involved with their children's schools, cook healthy meals, go to medical appointments, and participate in physical and other healthy activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Cherie Blanchard? Did I hear that name right? Clarice, excuse me. Excuse me.
That's handwriting. Thank you so very much for letting me speak today to the Board of Supervisors. I really, and of course, John Mulby, I really feel honored to follow your leadership in this direction. It gave us an opportunity, our agency, Star Vista, to talk actively about our belief in the minimum wage. I do love the number 19, but I think I was hearing a little bit earlier, 15. We would love to get to 15. And I'm going to read a couple notes. You're the leaders of San Mateo County, and you could take us in a wonderful direction. It gives someone a sense of value. And we're asking, oh, and I also want to say that Star Vista is a participant of the San Mateo County BHRS providers, behavioral health providers, and in our whole provider organization, although just a few of us are here today, believe in this minimum wage. We pay some of our master's level, even doctoral level, $13 an hour while they're interning with us. And, and it, and it gives a message. We're asking them to do some very difficult work, work with our homeless youth, work in our overnight shelter for youth, and we'd like to be able to say with pride that we value you at a higher level. With that, I do realize it will cost the county more. I've been a participant, a taxpayer, you won't believe it, I know, since 1957, been here in San Mateo County. I graduated from Burlingame High School, all my kids graduated from Burlingame High School, and I'm willing to say I pay a greater tax to make sure that we could offer this to some of our most very valuable employees. I thank you very much. Oh, I did have one statistic for you, if you're at all interested. In 2001.
Go ahead.
In 2001, when I went to work for Star Vista, 80% of our employees lived in San Mateo County. Now 40% live in San Mateo County.
I brought up my cards. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have one letter from Connie Boyer, who asked, she could not be here today, but she was, is encouraging us to include the IHSS in whatever we do. So what is your pleasure?
I guess, I just like, I did make a few comments on trying to give us some stats and some, you know, visuals that we can see that would show us what these dollar figures would do for us and how far-reaching they'd be, and it would also help figure out what the salaries might be for people being able to live here in our community. I just think that would be very helpful from my perspective.
I think we need a survey of our not-for-profit providers, the information that they might be willing to share with us on their employees, where they live, what they pay them currently, what kind of benefits they pay them, so we could, and, you know, at some point, we might want to have a not-for-profit organization meeting, ask them to come and set up a meeting and talk to us about this, once we have some of that information. Don?
I'd also like to see what different dollar amounts do, like, you know, some, some said 15, and some said 19, and 18. I'd just like to see what that looks like.
Dave?
You know, President Groom, I know, you know, earlier in the year, there, we had some discussion, or potentially, about the potential of having a subcommittee.
Yeah.
There's a lot of variables here, and, you know, I think it would be well-suited if two members could kind of dig into this, and maybe bring back a schedule and approach, you know, for how we would get this done, a timeline for how we would get this done, and at some point, come back with recommendations on these variables. I mean, some of them, you know, ultimately, you know, many I mean, some of them, you know, ultimately, you know, many of them will need the full attention of the board. Some of them are more second level. And I think, as you're aware, I'd be very excited about participating on that committee.
I think maybe a small committee of eight to 10, and a couple of, a couple of not-for-profit leaders, and somebody from the labor community, and a couple of us. I think that would go a long way toward, if that meets with your pleasure, all of you.
Yes.
So I'm going to take the prerogative to see if Supervisor Pine and I will be that subcommittee. Anything else for today?
Let me just thank you, Madam President, for your leadership on this issue. It's appreciated. I'm curious about the timeline, and I know there's going to be a committee, but, and I know there's a lot of work to be done here and a lot of surveying, but do you have a sense of timeline for this?
Well, I'm going to suggest that we put it on the fast track as much as we can, so that we can do something within six months, if the work level is able to do that. But take, you know, make, sort of set that as a goal, so that we can begin to look at the following year's budgets as we're preparing that. And if that's not enough time, we'll find that out soon enough, I think. Would that be okay, Ms. Jensen?
We will work with the subcommittee to develop a timeline, and depending upon the depth of the work we do, we can either compact that. But I think we can certainly try to meet recommendations back to your board, so you can do something around the budget hearings in June.
Okay. Mr. Niblin?
Yes, I was, President Grim, I just wanted to suggest perhaps a motion and a vote with respect to setting up of the, of the committee that you were describing.
Certainly. Supervisor Pine made that motion.
Okay. Second, and Carol could be the second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. I want to thank all of you. I know how much work went into this through the, through our budget office and through Ms. Jensen's office and through our, through our county council's office. And thank you, I think this is a very, very thorough report, and we've learned a great deal from this, and so thank you very much.
May I make one more comment? It was pointed out, of course, earlier, that our focus here is on our county contracts and the livable wage. There's been some discussion in the county about minimum wage. I think it's appropriate for us to get this done, but I would ask staff to keep a surprise of those developments, you know, just so, you know, it's not, not on the agenda now, but it's something that I think we should keep an eye on.
Will do.
Okay. So now we're going to go to item number eight.
Can we take a quick break?
Of course. Five minutes. Is Terry in there? Well, here we go. We've got to go to item number eight. Louise Rogers and Heather Forché.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Rogers. Louise Rogers and Heather Forché. Today, I'm here to present information on proposed amendments to the county's septic ordinance and request approval of the amendments. As you may already know, septic systems are primarily found in the unincorporated areas of the county and those areas that do not receive or have access to municipal sewer service. Currently, we have roughly 6,000 systems in our county. First, let me answer the most frequently asked question about the ordinance update. What does it do for existing septic systems? Well, for existing systems that are not failing, no changes to the septic ordinance or septic system are required simply by approving the ordinance update. Now, if the septic system is failing, or there's a remodel, such as a bedroom addition, then, as with our current ordinance, the septic system may need repair or modification, and updated construction standards would apply. The second most frequently asked question is, why are we doing this now? Well, back in 2000, Assembly Bill 885 was passed by the state legislature, and this assembly bill essentially requires jurisdictions with septic system programs to comply with the new statewide standards. Our current septic ordinance was last updated 19 years ago and is not consistent with the new state requirements. Therefore, we've identified proposed changes that will align our septic system program with state policies, clean up previously ambiguous language, and modernize our septic design requirements to be consistent with industry and regional standards. In early 2015, county environmental health reached out to technical experts and invited them to join a technical advisory committee. The committee consisted of 22 participants from local planning and building departments, septic system designers, contractors, installers, LAFCO, a representative for environmental interests, two regional water quality control board staff, one being from the Central Coast region, one being from the San Francisco Bay region, our consultant, and of course, environmental health staff. We identified and discussed a number of changes that were priority, including setbacks and citing criteria. These have been made consistent with state requirements. For the most part, the updated ordinance simply clarifies items from our existing ordinance. A septic pump or inspection program would be established to satisfy AB 885 requirements as well. Also, for more complex proposals, we would require more information from technical experts to be included in the septic plans and design. And while septic systems for secondary dwelling units on a property are allowed in the current ordinance and the updated ordinance, the TAC wanted a more uniform approach to designing them, so they developed some language to do just that. The combination of updating state-mandated criteria and making clarifications, but not drastic changes to the ordinance, has been reviewed by both county council and county planning and deemed CEQA compliant. Environmental health began this project over a year and a half ago, and with the tax help, we believe that our amended ordinance will successfully support our local septic program. Once a final draft was reviewed by council in September, environmental health staff emailed the draft ordinance out to a broader stakeholder group. We posted it on our website, seeking feedback, and separated, separately reached out to a dozen groups and offered to present or discuss the ordinance to them. This fall, environmental health conducted half a dozen outreach presentations to various committees and commissions, including the county's planning commission. The state water board imposed a hard deadline of May of 2016 for all local jurisdictions with septic, local septic programs, to report, to provide a report with supporting documentation demonstrating our compliance with AB 885. And that's why we're here today, to request approval of the amendments. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I will move approve of the ordinance amending the chapter 4.84 of Title IV.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we will go to item number nine, the Fatherhood Collaborative.
Good morning, honorable members of the board. Mr. Malby, Mr. Byers, I'm Iliana Rodriguez with the Human Services Agency, here to chat with you about the Fatherhood Collaborative. As the home agency for the Fatherhood Collaborative since 2010, I would like to recognize the admirable work of the collaborative, or what the collaborative has done, in bringing awareness to the importance of fathers in maintaining the resiliency and healthy families in our community. As the motion to dissolve the collaborative goes before you today, I appreciate this opportunity to provide a picture of what this change means and to assure you and our stakeholders that the county's commitment to fathers remains strong. As you know, the Fatherhood Collaborative was started in 1998 by then-former supervisor and now state senator Jerry Hill. The mission of the Fatherhood Collaborative is to succeed, or to support the importance of men and fathers in the lives of children, and support the importance of fathers taking an active role in raising their children or rearing their children. In terms of accomplishments, the collaborative has maintained their event planning over the past years. There is an annual Dad and Me at the Park held during the Father's Day weekend. They also have supported Dad and Me events in joint partnership with the county library and the Human Services Agency. They have also hosted bi-annual Dad and Me count breakfasts for fundraising, and a bi-annual conference to raise awareness on the issues of fathers. However, there have been challenges. An assessment report was commissioned in October of 2014. It highlighted areas that the Fatherhood Collaborative was challenged in its current structure. Without being rooted in county programs, authority to implement policies to support fathers is very limited. Inherent challenges in fundraising, limited access to departmental information and data to identify and ultimately close the gaps for those fathers most in need. Recommendations including building robust relationships with CBOs and county agencies in order to connect to fathers in need, and to embed efforts in county programs. The county departments value the importance of fathers in the lives of their children, and we have an opportunity to renew our support and engagement of fathers in San Mateo County. The county's commitment to reach at-risk fathers honors the finding of the actions recommended in the recent assessment. The Human Services Agency, for example, is in a unique position to provide the safety net to its residents serving low-income families, healthcare, reentry, assistance with employment, or single parents. This allows us to directly reach fathers who are most at risk. Several other county departments can reach other at-risk fathers in their client database, and we also have access to them through existing partnership with local service providers. Targeting at-risk fathers over the general public will allow the county to maximize and leverage our resources and expertise and improve outcomes for this part of the community. By connecting them to tangible services and helping to stabilize the quality of life, there is a direct link to helping fathers increase their ability and capacity to engage with their children. As a task force, a task force is a unit specifically organized for a specific task. The Human Services Agency proposes the formal collaboration and coordination of the county's departments that actively provide father-focused supports and resources. This work group would organize around the task of promoting the county's existing father-focused programs, sharing the outcomes, and over time, evaluating the efficacy of these activities and considering other needs for fathers. A mechanism for public input would be explored to include feedback from agencies, clients, and constituents that are benefiting from these programs. The initial group includes the health system, Human Services Agency, probation, the library, and Child Support Enforcement. In the future, we want to fold in our first five commissioners, who works with many fathers and families and other departments. In addition, there was an immediate desire to maintain the popular Dad and Me events by the county departments, and I'm happy to report that the library, pool, and park events will continue. To give you just a glimpse of what some of our departments are doing, here's an example of flyers from our health system for their new pilot DADs program, which provides a variety of referrals and services, including in-person visits and health and social needs assessments for fathers. There's also Behavioral Health's project, Parent Project, offering parenting courses for parents. The program also works closely with the probation department, who also has launched a new initiative, their Proud Parenting Program, offered to young parents, young fathers ages 14 to 25, to teach basic techniques and life skills. We also have here examples of our multidisciplinary team at Service Connect, who work together with our, with our at-risk fathers who are re-entering the community from incarceration. And these events are connecting, reconnecting dads when appropriate with their children. In terms of the next steps, is to promote father-focused resources with county clients and service providers. Engage at-risk fathers from our programs and seek their participation in developing strategies on how best to serve their needs. The new county task force will look at the needs of fathers and help identify the service gaps between county services and the county providers. In closing, I want to thank the Fatherhood Collaborative for their work in bringing fathers' issues to the forefront. Departments want to now move the lever and build on this work, which at this time, we believe, needs to be done within the departments. Thank you. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Rodriguez?
I don't have a question. I, you know, I know it was nice to have the Fatherhood Collaborative, and I am appreciative of the work that they did, but I do think to sort of have, I always call these sort of wraparound services, to have all the departments that really have lots of things going on around fathers and mothers and all the rest, really will get, give us a better benefit in the long run for the, for the fathers themselves, not, and so I do think, as painful as it is sometimes taking something and changing it is difficult, we did the same with the Children's Fund, we did the same with Jobs for Youth. At some point, you really need those internal resources to really make things work, and I think that this is just another example where I think we can actually, you know, add a lot more to it by bringing it in internally. So I thank you for your effort on this.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to dissolve.
Second.
If I may make a comment, I--
And we have some speaker cards.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Go ahead, Supervisor Pine.
You know, I have served as the liaison to the Fatherhood Collaborative, and it's, you know, it's always difficult to disband a commission. And, you know, I've thought a lot about this. I mean, I think there's no question the county has a real commitment to fathers, and that commitment was certainly instilled in part by the collaborative. But I think the big change now is a really laser focus on at-risk families. And I think we'll be able to do that effectively through the process that Iliana described, having the departments talking to each other and working on these at-risk focused programs. You know, the collaborative's, you know, focus over the last number of years has been fairly broad in scope, and I think when, on this narrower focus, it lends itself to a different, a different structure. But again, it is not, never easy to make this kind of decision, but I think it's a healthy thing for us from time to time to look at our commissions, and, you know, we start things, and sometimes things, you do evolve, and maybe, I think this is a situation where that's occurred.
Thank you. Let me call Lee Miller. How about Joe Albowitz? Okay. With that, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And thank you, Supervisor Pine. Thanks for your help in, in dealing with that issue. I, a speaker card for item number eight got lost in item number nine. So is Tamara Gabel still here? Okay. Took too long with our other items, I guess. Now we'll go to item 11. Ms. Jensen again.
Good morning again, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Malby and Mr. Byers. My name is Peggy Jensen. I'm deputy county council, I'm not deputy county council, I'm deputy county manager. Thinking too much ahead. So, back when your board adopted the 29-point Affordable Housing Initiative, there were two items related to mobile home parks. We are here this morning to present a report back and propose action for your board to take on both of those items. The first item is a continuation, the extension of the moratorium on conversion or closure of mobile home parks, and that will be presented by Deputy County Counsel Melissa Andropopoulos.
Thank you, Peggy. Good morning. So just to summarize very quickly for you, the proposed ordinance before you today would extend the temporary urgency ordinance, which you adopted last, last month in November, on November 17th. That urgency ordinance would otherwise expire on January 1st of 2016. That urgency ordinance would otherwise expire on January 1st of 2016. The proposed ordinance before you today, if you adopt it, would extend the temporary moratorium on conversion or closure of mobile home parks for an additional 22 months and 15 days from January 1st. So that puts us out to, I believe it's November 16th of 2017, so a complete temporary moratorium period of two years. As you saw in the memorandum prepared by staff before you, we've summarized some of the efforts that staff has taken to date to address the issues related to mobile home conversions, and have also begun the task of identifying the next steps that we will take, should you extend the temporary moratorium, to get a better handle on whether potential changes are needed and what those changes might be. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Okay, we have some public speakers. Olivia Calderon.
Yo vivo en la 855 Barron, y estamos aquí para pedir por favor que no nos desalojen. Yo soy una madre viuda con hijos, y mi hija quiere ir a la universidad, y a mí me afectaría como madre que soy sola, soy padre y madre. Nos afectaría a todos nosotros porque todos tenemos hijos, las rentas están muy altas, y yo si nos sacan de ahí, no podría apoyar a mi hija para que vaya a la universidad.
So, good morning. I live at 855 Barron. I am a wedded, single mother. My daughter would like to go to a university, and if I will get dislocated, I will not be able to help my daughter with that because the rents are very high.
Gracias. Thank you. Thank you. Natalie Kuzada.
That's me.
Okay.
So, good morning, and I am speaking in behalf of Rebuilding Together Peninsula. I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for the approved funding, and I also would like to give a public thanks to Miles Hancock and Hector Avila from the Building Department, Sanda Estrin and Brian Florence from the Health Department, Irvin Torres and Supervisor Warren's Locum's Office, Shirley Gibson from Legal Aid and her team for all the support in this project. Rebuilding Together has truly put their heart into this project. I would not like for this funding, sorry, to go down the drain and for our effort in the repairs. I would like for, so I would not like for this funding and our effort in the repairs to go down the drain. I would like for the tenants to eventually, you know, to stay in the park and not eventually get dislocated. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Sanchez.
Mi nombre es Adam Sanchez, y yo también vivo ahí en la 855 Barron, y lo que les vengo a decir es que les damos las gracias de antemano ante todos por la ayuda que nos están ofreciendo y que nos están dando.
So, my name is Adam Sanchez, and I also live at 855 Barron. I would like to thank you for the support that you guys are giving us.
Y decirles que yo soy un hombre ya retirado también, y que si pues nos sacaran de allí pues, ¿a dónde nos vamos a ir? Ya no tengo hijos, tengo un nieto.
So, I am retired. I do not have children. I have a grandson.
Y que Dios me los bendiga a todos, y muchas gracias.
And God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Alex Alas.
Hi, my name is Alex. I live with my mom, one of my uncles, in 855 Barron Avenue in space B14. I've been living there for four years. My mom is a single mom. She works hard enough every week. It kills me that I got this news about dislocating the trailers because she works hard enough to pay the rent, to pay the food, and to go somewhere else just to live under the bridge where, you know, I'm trying to make it out of there, and I'm trying to make my mom to get out of that place, but for now, I want to live there. I love the place. I love the people that we met there. I just, a couple of weeks ago, I just found out that we have like two newborn babies, and with those two newborn babies, if they just look at the trailers, what's going to happen with the kids? What's going to happen with the people that can't have a good job? I'm barely trying to go get a good job. There's nowhere that they pay enough so I can go get a house, so I can be with my mom. And right now, if you guys just collect the trailers, I'm going to separate from my mom. I talked to my mom. She said we probably are going to have to separate, and I don't want to separate from her. I want to stay with my mom. I want my uncle to stay with us because he's the only person that, if he goes, he doesn't even work that much. He only works a couple of days. He pays around like $200. My mom, you know, she does her best to what she can do. She only has two days off. She does whatever she can do, and I just, hopefully you guys make the right decision, look out for the kids that are barely growing up. They're trying to make it to school. They're trying to go to college, go to high school, from rural city. So please make the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you for being here this morning, Alex. Adriana Diaz.
I'm, I think she's...
Dana. Mauro Barrera.
My name is Mauro Barrera. I'm the same situation. I mean, I live in the 55 Barron Avenue, in that park. We're here to hear what's going on with the park. I mean, I know probably you have the best decision for us. I mean, we are not here together today, but we try to represent all the park, the 51 families that live there. I mean, we try to stay together. I mean, it's hard because most of us have to work. We will wait for your decision. I mean, I know that we will have a new owner in the park. We will try to work with him together, but he has to work with us, too. I mean, we will wait for your decision. I mean, I think that we are like you. We are human, too. I mean, I think that we have the right to be treated as a human, too. Right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera, for being here. That concludes the public speaking, so we have a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion to adopt the interim urgency ordinance extending the moratorium on the conversion or closure of mobile home parks pending the review and possible adoption of land use regulations applicable to such conversions and closures.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
Just wanted to make a quick question.
Please.
Maybe Mr. Nivlin can answer this, but one of the speakers just said that they received a notice, something about dislocating the trailers. Do you know anything about that notice or what that might be?
No, Supervisor. I don't have any information about that. I was checking with a couple of my colleagues. We haven't seen it either, but we will certainly drill down on that as soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll go to item number 12, which is the rent control ordinance for the county mobile homes. Do you want to have the speaker first?
That's a good idea.
You mean Attorney Jensen?
Yeah. Yeah. So, the second item related to mobile homes on your agenda this morning was requested by your board again as part of your Affordable Housing Initiative. You asked that the staff audit the current mobile home rent control ordinance. To do that work, we assembled a team that included Chief Deputy County Counsel John Byers, County Counsel Brian Coolidge, and Ellie Dolman from our outreach team. They are going to together present to you the findings from our research and a series of recommended amendments to the ordinance that are based upon the findings from the work that we did. So, John?
Thank you.
Good morning once again. As Peggy was noting, we were tasked by the board to take a look at the county's mobile home ordinance, rent control ordinance, and, you know, some of the subtasks that we saw under that heading were to sort of research sort of the historical compliance trends with respect to the ordinance, and also to take a look at the effectiveness of the ordinance in terms of, you know, the goals that had been set for it, and on the basis of all that, identify and develop some appropriate changes and bring those to you for your consideration. I thought that a good place to start would be just a real quick summary of kind of what we're dealing with currently. What's our existing ordinance say? And of course, our existing ordinance dates back over 10 years to 2003, and it's presently codified in our ordinance code. And it imposes rent control, as the name suggests, in mobile home parks located in the unincorporated area of the county. There are three primary components. I mean, there are, you know, and the particulars are, there's more to talk about, but there are three primary components to our rent control ordinance. This is sort of classic rent control. We've had some conversations in the past about rent control, you know, vacancy de-control, these kind of very confusing terms, but this is classic rent control. This starts with the base year, that base date, that being July 1st, 2003, and it limits year over year the amount that you can increase rents for mobile home spaces in these parks, and that increase is limited to 75% of the Consumer Price Index for the Bay Area. So that's the primary thing that the ordinance does. It also effectively prevents a reduction in rent through a reduction of service. If you see a, I'm sorry, a reduction in, an increase in rent, I guess is what I meant to say, through a reduction in service. If you see a reduction in service at a park, the rent has to be reduced proportionately to the value of the reduction of the service we're talking about. And finally, the ordinance specifically provides that landlords are barred from requiring tenants to enter into leases with terms of more than one year. That's important because under state law, leases that are for longer than a year are exempt from local rent control. So we have a particular, a specific protection in place for that. Our ordinance also includes due process protections for park owners. Park owners who don't believe that they're getting a fair rate of return on their investment in a park are allowed to file a petition with the county requesting an increase in rent beyond that which would otherwise be allowed under the ordinance. And the way things are currently configured, the Community Development Director would adjudicate any petitions like that that would come in. The ordinance presently includes a $2 per month per mobile home space administrative fee, as well as a filing fee of $2,000 for that petition I was just talking about on the last slide, if a landlord was looking for an increase beyond that which is authorized automatically of right. So, again, that sort of lays the groundwork. That's where we are right now. I'm going to turn this over to, I think it's Ms. Dolman, who's going to talk a little bit about the outreach that we've done in connection with all this.
All right. So, good morning, everyone. We used a variety of sources to gather information that helps to inform the proposed changes to the ordinance today, and these sources are listed here: state mobile home records, housing and census records, planning and building records. We also spoke with Legal Aid and the EPA Community Law Project. I also conducted surveys with park owners and managers who were interested in participating, asking them some questions, and we also did in-person park visits just to assess the structures that are currently there to learn more about the parks. And we found that there are a total of eight parks under San Mateo County jurisdiction with approximately 787 spaces, and the average monthly rental rate that was self-reported by those park owners or managers that did participate is approximately $972. And we don't have, there have not been any petitions for rent increases by any of the parks since the ordinance has been put into place, and the administrative fee that, I believe it's a $2 fee that the county laid out in the ordinance, we have not been collecting that since the ordinance was passed. And we also learned of some cases where tenants entered into longer-term leases, so that would be more than 12 months, which would exempt them from this mobile home rent control ordinance.
Okay, I'm here to talk about our recommended responses to the findings that Ms. Dolman just summarized. There are five responses. The first response is staff recommends amending the ordinance, the changing the hearing officer to the Director of Housing. We think that's appropriate because the Director of Housing has specific expertise in the area of local housing, and it also kind of brings this ordinance more in line with the county's larger affordable housing efforts. That's the first one. The second response is elimination of the $2 per space monthly administration fee. The reason for this is, I mean, this is a fee that's ultimately borne by the tenants, many of whom you've heard are low-income families or seniors. Also, as we've kind of looked into it, we don't anticipate the future expenses to be that high. Our third response, recommended response, is creating an annual reporting requirement for all parks. So, this would be based on a report that's developed by the Director of Housing, and what it would do, it would give the county information about occupancy rates, rental rates, potential conversions of mobile home parks. The fourth response is that we're recommending that the ordinance be amended to require that the actual ordinance be posted in park rental offices and that its material terms be included in leases in the language in which the lease is negotiated. Also, the Department of Housing will prepare a safe harbor text, which would be included for the posting or inclusion requirement. And lastly, this is not an amendment to the ordinance, but we're recommending developing an education and outreach program to both tenants and owners, and further research regarding potential changes or improvements to the ordinance. We found that a lot of his issues, potentially the owners not requesting an increase in rent, and tenants being routed into longer-term leases, may be the result of a lack of education. So we're going to get out there and let people know kind of what their rights are. And we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have of us.
Questions? Supervisor's welcome.
Thank you. Just curious about those long-term leases that were signed, and you said something about lack of understanding, but can anything be done about that? Because as I understand that story, you know, a Spanish-speaking person's contract is presented in English, it's kind of sold as this is a benefit to you, sign this, and, you know, the document gets signed. And so then those people, as we just heard, that signed the lease documents are not subject to the rent control provision of the ordinance. Can anything be done about, I guess there's, I couldn't find it, but one park perhaps that has done this sort of lease program? Is there anything that could be done about that going back in time?
Going back in time? Well, first of all, that particular park is subject to a class action lawsuit, so, you know, there's a court-based way of potentially remedying that. What we're proposing, as it described, is the posting requirement and including the material terms of the ordinance in the language in which the contract is negotiated. If you're negotiating in Spanish, you can't be presented with an English version. You need to have it in Spanish. So that particular change, the ordinance, gets to exactly that issue. So folks are aware of what they're signing.
And as the person that's going to sit and explain this to the tenants, not only will the document be in Spanish, but will they be a Spanish speaker?
That, that's a great question. I mean, one of the things that we had, again, tried to, uh, to make happen is, by way of, uh, by way of the ordinance, is ensure that, uh, you know, the Housing Department comes up with, uh, uh, safe harbor texts that, that would try to break this down so that it isn't overly, overly, um, legalistic. I mean, maybe somebody besides an attorney could draft it, but, uh, try to put something together so that it's, it's comprehensible to, to park residents in their, in the language in which, uh, matters are negotiated. The education outreach efforts that we're, uh, that we're talking about here could certainly, uh, try to address some of the concerns you're, you're expressing here, ensuring that there are, uh, people who are knowledgeable in the advocacy community who, you know, are, are sort of keyed in as well.
Thank you. Uh, just one follow-up question. Do you have the current status of that class action lawsuit when that goes forward?
I'm going to have to defer to my colleague, Mr. Coolidge, who I know has been looking more closely at this. Is there anything else to, to add? My understanding is that it's, it's, it's currently pending, um, that it still, has not yet been resolved, so. But I know Legal Aid is, is, um, with, uh, with the Kochet firm are, are spearheading that class action.
Brian, before you sit down, could you please state your name for the record?
Of course. Brian, and last name is Coolidge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave?
Um, a couple of questions. So, this provision about how, I guess by state law, a lease cannot be longer than 12 months, otherwise your rent control provision is not enforceable? Did I, do I understand that correctly?
That's right. Leases that are, uh, longer than 12 months are exempt from local rent control ordinances. That's true.
Out of curiosity, is that applicable in, you know, jurisdictions, you know, outside the mobile home park context, like San Francisco, Berkeley, places that have adopted rent control? Do they have that same, same rule?
This is a specific provision of the Civil Code that pertains to, um, mobile home rent control. Um, I'm not aware off the top of my head that a similar provision exists in, in the context of, uh, the rent control and other forms of housing that, that's otherwise authorized under Costa-Hawkins.
Yeah. I, I just kind of wonder how that provision, what the thinking is behind that provision when we go to my next question in that, so most of, well, I guess it's our desire that, that all the tenants be, um, protected by the ordinance, therefore have a lease of 12 months or less, which would mean that, which would mean that, you know, what happens when their lease expires? Are they, are they then vulnerable for, and are they, how vulnerable at that point that their lease won't be re-upped?
Well, I guess, uh, just to, to, to restate the, uh, sort of, I guess where we, where we are with this, uh, definitely, we, we, by way of the ordinance, we want to make sure that everybody's aware of their right to be offered a lease of, uh, a year or less. Uh, and that, uh, and some people may for, for, you know, for their own economic reasons decide that a five-year lease of X amount is, is something that's, uh, advantageous to them. Uh, but, uh, you know, you can't make, on re-up time, you can't make acceptance of a lease longer than a year, a condition of entering into the lease. So, you, the question of whether or not you're vulnerable at the, um, you know, at the time that that hypothetical five-year lease I was just talking about.
More likely the one-year lease.
Correct. Correct. I think in that.
Is there, is there any just cause in our ordinance? Just cause eviction?
Just cause, I believe, exists in the Civil Code. You, you can only be, so, which is something that exists separate and distinct from our, from our, uh, ordinance. So, indeed, there is a just cause, a, a requirement if you're going to evict somebody from a mobile home, mobile home park space. By operation of state law.
But again, if, um, I, I guess it's accurate to say that if, if you have a 12-month lease, um, you know, you have no certainty that that lease will be renewed, obviously be renewed.
I'm sorry.
If you, if you're a tenant with a 12-month lease, you don't have any certainty your lease will be renewed. I mean, that's.
Well, unless there was a conversion or closure, which we've.
Right.
Which we've spoken to. Okay.
Don?
Uh, well, first of all, I want to commend the staff for eliminating the $2 per month administrative fee. I think that's got to be historic that we've ever eliminated a fee. The other, uh, maybe Ms. Dahlman can answer this. On the mobile homes, are they all owned by the occupants or are there some of them rented from owners?
Um, so, I believe some of them are owned by the park owners, and then there are some that are, um, owned by the, by the tenant as well. So, I've heard of both cases.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Um, we, if no, we have a pub, we have a, uh, speaking card from Shirley Gibson.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this issue about which I'm very passionate as lead counsel on that class action case. Uh, I've been up to my neck in, in these very issues, and I am so gratified to see two major vulnerabilities of this ordinance being addressed today. Um, these are improvements that really go a long way to the viability of maintaining this irreplaceable source of affordable housing. The disclosure requirement in particular is something necessary to combat the, um, general misinformation that tenants are given at lease-up. Uh, the existence of rent control is, uh, is mostly news to people that I encounter who are in long-term leases at this point, and Bay Shore Villa with 138 current tenancies is a spectacular example. Not a single one of those, uh, tenancies originated with a 12-month or less lease. The only residents of that park who are currently subject to the rent control ordinance have been there long enough to outlast their leases. And only because they have managed to roll into a month-to-month tenancy are they now subject to rent control. Not coincidentally, of those three tenancies, every single one of them, their first language is English. So, there are no Spanish-speaking or English second-language tenants who have rent control protections in that park right now. The annual reporting requirement is another, um, major gap that, uh, that, that needs addressing. Uh, the records of rent increases and base rent in many of the parks with which we've worked, uh, through Legal Aid are, um, patchy to nonexistent. So, as a litigator attempting to enforce vacancy control, um, these annual reporting requirements will give us the tools we need to be on the forefront of enforcing this ordinance. So, kudos to the staff, uh, and to County Counsel for bringing this forward, and I look forward to seeing additional improvements in the future.
Thanks, Ms. Gibson.
I was just going to, I want to know if it was time for me to introduce the ordinance.
Yes, it is.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, good. Thanks again to, uh, that whole team for working. And Natalie, thank you very much for coming and doing translation for us. We really appreciate it. So, now, we'll go to item number 13 and number 14, which are measure A.
Madam President, members of the board, as you've said, um, both of these items are being brought forth by District Four. Item number 13, it is recommended that there be a one-time grant of $30,000 to the St. Francis Center project in Redwood City to furnish the community room and the work-study rooms. Um, and then, just to roll into 14, uh, a recommendation of a one-time grant of almost $57,000 to InVision Shelter Network for the purpose of repairs at two of their facilities, one in East Palo Alto and one in Menlo Park. And I believe, um, Supervisor Slocum may have some additional comments.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, the, the memos are pretty self-explanatory, but the $30,000 grant to St. Francis is to furnish, um, to do some furnishing, um, upgrades once the building gets built. And then, the InVision Shelter Network, where needed improvements to water heaters and roofs and, uh, repaving of a parking, uh, parking lot, I believe. But other than that, I would just, uh, could I make the motion?
Yes, please.
Uh, on item 13, make the motion to approve a resolution authorizing a one-time, uh, expanded grant of $30,000 to the St. Francis Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, a resolution authorizing one-time, uh, grant of $56,925 to InVision Shelter Network.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Sloc, Supervisor Slocum. Uh, you have, you have County Manager's, uh, Report Number 23.
Madam President, I would just add to that, um, wishing you, on behalf of the entire county staff and your family and loved ones, a joyous holiday and a happy new year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could you do the quick comment on, uh, a related item on the County Manager Report?
Please.
You, uh, County Manager Malby pointed out, uh, that you were kind of getting, trying to get the record straight on our Prop 47 numbers, which is great. Now, I just want to let you know that I made a very good meeting with the private defender about what we're doing with Prop 47, and, uh, actually doing a great, quite a bit. Um, I was pretty impressed with the private defender that's kind of taking the lead here. And what, what I learned, I didn't know previously, was that your right to have your sentence, your record cleansed expires. So, you know, basically, there's, we're, we have, we're a year into it, there's two more years to go. So, um, the extent that people want to take advantage of that opportunity, it's, it's time, it's time limited. So, it's important that we're able to accommodate, you know, to process those things and get the word out.
Okay. I wanted to make a comment on, uh, item number 22 of the, uh, consent calendar. Uh, this was the recommendation of, of seven members to the Commission on the Status of Women. Just wanted to say that we had over 100 nominations, applications submitted. We, the search, the selection committee narrowed them down, and we interviewed, Supervisor Slocum and I interviewed about 30 people, 20 people, and we were so impressed with the quality of the applicants as well as the reasons they wanted to be on the Women's Commission. It was really hard. And so, these, these folks went through a very rigorous selection process, and, um, we'll probably have some vacancies in the future, and we hope to invite some of the people who applied to, to reapply again. So, I think, I look forward to the, to the good work of the Commission on the Status of Women for 2016.
And if I could add an observation there, too. It seems that we're getting a lot more applicants for our commissions, which is great. And I, I think part of the credit there goes to, you know, Krista and our outreach efforts, you know, for example, utilizing that neighborhood network has really been a way to get people involved that previously weren't aware of these things.
Good point. Um, so with that, we'll go to board reports. Supervisor Horst, please.
Uh, just to journey memory of, uh, actually, it was a personal dear friend of mine. His name was Giuseppe Peroni, actually, Joe Peroni. And, uh, he served in the, he was actually born in Italy. He was a farmer in Italy, and he served in the Italian Army. And when he, uh, completed his 18 months of service, he and his brother immigrated to the United States in 1953. He met his wife Lena in 1963 at the Italian-American Club, and he asked her to dance and at the very same night asked her to marry him, and they stayed married for 55 years. They have two children, three, five grandchildren. He worked for a number of years. You just kind of love it for a sight. He, uh, he went, um, he worked for Sunstream Homes, or maybe it was, um, no, yeah, it was Sunstream Homes, uh, for Standard, basically the builders of Cerimani. And that is where I met him. I had, was a young homeowner, and, uh, he, uh, got, he, he was, he did some work on my house. He gave me a shovel, and he actually told me which end to use. He was a great guy, uh, hard-working man, and, uh, great family.
Adrian?
Okay. Once again, we have.
Those driver classes.
I know. I'm trying to keep you guys up to speed on this. We have three upcoming Age Well Drive Smart seminars. The first one's Redwood City, Thursday, January 28th, from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Veterans Memorial Senior Center. Next one's in Half Moon Bay, uh, Tuesday, February 23rd, at the Senior Coastiders from 9:00 to 12:30. And the third one is in South San Francisco on Thursday, April 28th, at the Magnolia Senior Center from 9:00 to 12:30.
Supervisor Pine?
I'd like to, um, journey memory today of Rick Oxenhert from South San Francisco. Um, you know, Rick was a incredible community volunteer and been passionate about his city and the county. Uh, he just thrived on community involvement and made a great contribution to the city, and he served on the Planning Commission for 11 years, and the Park and Rec Commission, uh, you know, numerous community organizations such as the Lions Club, the Chamber of Commerce, the Bond Oversight Committee, the Historical Society. And he, he was elected to the, to the School Board in 2012, which he took great pride in. And it was really important to him and really a great culmination of, of what he had done in the community, and was really off to, uh, making a significant contribution. He served, uh, despite, uh, having to, to live with, uh, his illness for, for some time. So, uh, he will, he will be deeply missed. He loved playing bocce ball, and our condolences to his wife Karen.
No report? I have no report. So, uh, we're going to go to closed session.
Yes, and President Board, just one, one quick, uh, modification to closed session. Given, given the limited time between, uh, now and service awards at 1:30, and given that there's a fairly robust agenda for closed session, we're going to move the item[1789.48]